I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Joseph.
Here.
Commissioner Lama.
Here.
Commissioner Stuvesant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Viscara.
Here.
Mayor Goldman.
Here.
All members present, madam.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Lou Taylor, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation.
It's on by Rabbi Kaller.
Rabbi Kaller. Thank you so much.
To be meet, honorable mayor, commissioners, friends. Three weeks ago, on January 27th, we commemorated a Holocaust remembrance day that was established on the day of liberation of the Auschwitz death camp in 1945. Perhaps one of the most famous victims of Holocaust is a young girl, Anne Frank, whose now world-famous diary, translated into over 70 languages, ends with the words, "I still believe, in spite of everything, that people really are good at heart." We just ended the elections, and I would like to congratulate newly-elected Commissioners Stuvesant and Joseph on their victories. I wish them both well, and extend my blessings to the entire commission to serve and to lead the residents of our beautiful city. But I am saddened that the process of electing those that seek public office in our city and beyond was accompanied, not for the first time, by so much negativity, personal attacks, slander, and even demonization of each other. It was toxic. None of us are angels. None of us are flawless. All of us make mistakes, missteps. It's human to err. I hope and pray that our city and our community, a community of neighbors, that as a community of neighbors we can commit to heading, to heeding the words of Anne Frank by seeing the good in each other, lifting each other, for this is truly the way to elevate our beautiful city together. May God give us the ability to stay focused on a common goal of building our beautiful city that is diverse, inclusive, multicultural, and prosperous, all with respect and loving kindness towards each other. God bless America. God bless the state of Florida. God bless Sunny Isles Beach. God bless each one of you. And I still believe, in spite of everything, that people really are good at heart.
Thank you so, thank you so much Rabbi Kaller for such a beautiful invocation, so true, and absolutely resonates. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes. We have the regular City Commission meeting summary minutes, December 15th to 2021, I'm sorry, December 16th, and the regular City Commission meeting summary minutes for January 20th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. For my opening statement. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome, and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that may become before the City Commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking, and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to one three-minute comment per item. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or you don't see speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of chambers. Okay. Now for the order of business. There have been changes to tonight's agenda as follows. We are hearing the following items out of order. Item 10J, Reso Accepting Special Election Results: Ceremonial Swear-In will be heard before the special presentations. Item 10H, Reso Approving a Second Amendment with Craven Thompson will be heard after item 5C. Deferred Items. Item 9A, Ordinance Creating Youth Advisory Committee. Item 10K, Resolution Approving Charitable Contribution to Social Seniors. Item 12A, Discussion Regarding Amendments to Noise Ordinance. Revised Item. Item 10I, Resolution Approving Agreement with ADG for Space Needs Assessment Study. And add-on items include the following. Item 5A, Proclamation Regarding Black History Month. Item 10L, Resolution Supporting Legislation Regarding Victims of Communism Day. Item 10M, Resolution Supporting Legislation Regarding Regulation of Smoking in Public Parks and Beaches. And Item 10N, Resolution Authorizing Payment to NDPRE Number 14 for Navarro Property. Do I hear a motion to accept those changes to the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item 10J. Next on the agenda is Resolution Accepting Special Election Results: Ceremonial Swear-In.
Yes, Mayor, the title for that item is a resolution pursuant to Section 5.1 of the Municipal Charter, accepting the results of the special election runoff, which was held on Tuesday, February 8th, 2022, declaring Jerry Joseph as Commissioner Seat 1 and Fabiola Stuvesant as Commissioner Seat 3. Mayor, so as everyone well knows, we had a special election to fill the seats of Commission C1 and Commission C3. In those two seats, we had a runoff. And in that runoff was Jerry Joseph, Joanna Ravinevich for Seat 1, and for Seat 3, Greg Capron and Fabiola Stuvesant. After that special election, it was determined that Jerry Joseph won Seat 1 by a total of 870 votes, and Fabiola Stuvesant won by a total of 774 votes. And this resolution is accepting the official results. So if we can just have a motion to approve?
Do we need a motion? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now if I can have both Commissioner Joseph and Commissioner Stuvesant join me downstairs.
Aye, Jerry Joseph. Being duly sworn by the city clerk. Being duly sworn by the city clerk. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support, protect, and defend. The Constitution and government. The Constitution and government. Of the United States of America. Of the United States of America. And of the state of Florida. That I am qualified. That I am qualified. To hold office. Under the Constitution of the State of Florida. And charter of the city of Sunny Isles Beach. And charter of the city, of the city of Sunny Isles Beach. And I will well. And faithfully perform. The duties of Commissioner. The duties of Commissioner. Of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida. Which duties I am about to assume, so help me God.
Aye, Fabiola Stuvesant. Being duly sworn by the city clerk. Do solemnly swear. That I will support, protect, and defend. The Constitution and government. Of the United States of America. And of the state of Florida. That I am qualified to hold office. Under the Constitution of the state of Florida. And charter of the city of Sunny Isles Beach. And that I will well. And faithfully perform. The duties of Commissioner. Of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida. Which duties I am about to assume. So help me God.
Now if the families want to join both Commissioners for a picture, you're more than welcome.
Special presentations. Next item is Certificate of Acknowledgement presented to the school volleyball team.
Commissioner, did you want to have any opening comments?
Yes, alright, so. Do you have the?
The names?
The right? Not Fabiola, man.
No, I make some more.
You guys, hold on a second. So basically, just wanted to commend the Norman S. Hettlecup SIB School volleyball team. They did a great job. They won the North District Championship and went on to compete for regional, correct? Yes, so, you know, I was able to attend a couple of games, and it was very emotional, and what I saw was awesome. You know, I saw a lot of grit, a lot of passion, and a lot of commitment from the team. It was something that, you know, is, I will always cherish. And I wanted to thank all of the players for their dedication, their commitment, the coaches, and also the parents. And I think this is an example that we should all follow because, one, sports, I think, shows us a lot of different values, and it shows us how to be dedicated as well, and to give it your all. And also for the parents to have that support. You know, they support the kids, and also it's something that we'll be able to, you know, carry on in the values that you learn. So, thank you very much. It's great, your achievement. It's something to be in awe. And I would love to continue to see you play and reach new heights. So, thank you very much. Yeah.
Okay, so what we're going to do now, if the commission can join down below, and I'll call each player's name. You can come and see your certificate, and then just stand there for a picture. Okay?
So these are all there?
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to start with the team captains. Gabriela Arcila. She's lying. Sherrell Baba. Mila Becherah. Camila Busque. Naya Corzo. Mariano Federici. Isis Gomez. Bianca Lama. Sarah Lopez. Bruna Oliveira. Melissa Pinto. Julia Ramirez. Raika Rice. Julia Shavitt. Ariana Tortolero. Victoria Orizar. Emma Winston.
So, again, I wanted to thank the players. You're an inspiration. I wanted to thank Ms. Mesa, Ms. Aguilar, and the coach as well, Coach Heather. So, thank you very much. Good luck in your fall.
Next, next item.
Next item is 5B, which is a presentation by the North Miami Beach Water Department.
Hello.
Hi, welcome, Mayor. Do you mind if I just give an introduction? Based on, you know, your prior direction, Susan and I had a meeting with representatives of North Miami Beach Water Department to kind of give us an update and status of our city and their efforts to improve our infrastructure. So I asked them to come tonight so that you can hear their presentation in person, and you're welcome to ask them any questions.
Yes, I'd also like to comment. Of course, many people in this room are aware of we had a recent water main break, and it calls to, it calls attention to, you know, our infrastructure issues in our city. And this is actually something that the city manager, the deputy city manager, and I have discussed quite a bit from, for months now about, you know, the issues of water infrastructure, water quality, water integrity, and we're going to be digging very, very much into this issue. So we welcome your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of the City Commission, members of the public, thank you for having us here. My name is Andrea Suarez Avastida. I am the Director of NMB Water, and I have Mr. Kareem Rossi here. He is our Infrastructure and Engineer Manager. I have a small presentation just to give you an update as to where we are with our capital improvement projects. And if you can go to the next slide. The agenda that we have is just NMB Water. I want to tell you a little bit about what NMB Water is and our CIP projects, especially the ones that is going to be affecting Sunny Isles Beach. And I'm going to also talk a little bit of the customer service support that we have in the city. The next, thank you. Next. So, NMB Water is the utility that serves right now not only Sunny Isles Beach, but it also serves some of the unincorporated Miami-Dade County, Miami Gardens, Aventura, Golden Beach, and, as you know, Sunny Isles Beach. The water supply and treatment that we have at the city is 20 potable wells. We have 16 that are from the Biscayne Aquifer, which is a superficial aquifer, and we have four Floridian wells that are from the, you know, the deeper aquifer that we have. Those are the main aquifers that we have here in Florida that feed most of the potable drinking water for the counties. Right now, we have three types of treatments at the plant. One is a lime softening system, which is the oldest system that we have at the plant. It was installed in 1950s. And we have two new systems, that is nanofiltration and the reverse osmosis system that treats the Floridian aquifer, which is a little bit more of the salty water. As some of you might know, recently, we transitioned the utility back to the city. It was under, you know, Jacobs, which was the company that was managing the utility. And since February of 2021, it was transitioned back to the city. We're expecting that this is going to help with customer service and providing a better, you know, administration of the utility. Next. So the capital improvement projects were set up in a way that there was a wastewater in a water master plan. So it, some of the projects were assessed. The utility as a whole was assessed. You are not affected by the wastewater portion. Most of our wastewater infrastructure is actually in Miami Gardens. We have some portions of wastewater in the city of North Miami Beach. You only have water at that point. Through that master plan, we assess the projects to make sure that we continue giving reliable water. And what we did is we analyzed all of those projects through 2030. We are starting with a five-year capital improvement plan, and that involves nine water projects and seven wastewater projects. Later on, I'll tell you a little bit more of what we're doing in the water treatment plant and what we're doing specifically in Sunny Isles Beach. The total cost of the capital improvement project is $102 million. This is partially being funded by bond revenue in a grant that we received. It's a loan, you know, a low-interest loan from the federal government, EPA. If you want to know, we actually have in our nmbwater.com a dashboard that will give you all of the details of each one of the projects. So you can see, you know, all of the projects that are involved in the capital improvement program. Next. The Norwood, as, I don't know if any of you know, but our water treatment plant is located in what we call now Miami Gardens. When it started back in the 50s, it was actually unincorporated Miami-Dade County, but it's now in Miami Gardens. And what we are doing at the plant specifically is we're doing upgrades on the lime softening system, which I mentioned is the oldest system that we have. We're installing new portable wells, and we are also doing some electrical and SCADA upgrades to the plant. What we're doing with the softening system is just making sure that if we're going to maintain the system or if we're going to go completely to membranes, which is RO and nanofiltration. So we're still in, this is going to become a progressive design-build project for the improvements. And we'll, right now, we're in negotiations, and it's still under the cone of silence, so I cannot tell you too much about the project yet. But like I said, it's in design and procurement. It's a $43.9 million investment, and we're expecting that we're going to be providing notice to proceed in April of 2022. So this year. Hopefully it'll go to commission for negotiations in March. The next slide. So the Sunny Isles Beach projects that we have ongoing is a system water main replacement project. And this is approximately 10,200 linear feet of water main that is located on Center Isle. So you can see the red lines at the top, which is in Center Isle. Those are, we're replacing the six-inch asbestos lines with eight-inch lines. This is not only going to help with the reliability of the water and like, Madam Mayor, you mentioned, you know, some of the breaks that could happen because of old infrastructure. And at the same time, we're installing new fire hydrants because this is also going to help with fire flow. So the benefits are, like we say, you know, reliability of the system and reduction in breaks at that point. We are also installing and replacing the eight-inch aerial crossing that you have in Atlantic Isle, and that's the other project that we have. Right now, we're actually coordinating with your city engineer, Mr. Labinski, because there is a storm water project. So we're looking at actually getting together and doing that project, you know, both projects at the same time. So we're going to be coordinating. We are actually at 90% submitted, and your project is about 60% design reviews. So we're going to come together as a partnership, and we're going to be bidding that project together. Next slide. Next slide. The next slide was completed already. This is another aerial crossing project that was completed in Ponciana Island Drive. And as you can see, the before picture, all of the pipe runs, you have not only water running through there, but you have other utilities, and all of the utilities actually were yellow. Usually, when you try to identify some of the lines, you know, you should, now, they should have specific colors to indicate what kind of utility they are. So, we went ahead and we did all the preparation, the cleaning, and we cleaned the pipes. And as you can see on the after, now, the two pipelines that we have there are now blue, so it's easier to identify what the water lines are just in case of an emergency. At the same time, coating the pipes just provides some increase in the life expectancy of the pipes. So, as I mentioned, this project is completed, and the investment was $267,000. Some of the customer service support that we have, and some of you might know, we have a new web support portal, so if you haven't subscribed to it, please go ahead and go to NMB Water, and you can, you'll be able to link in into getting not only information on your water bills, but if there's a leak that you have, it'll immediately let you know that there's something going on with your water that you should be looking at. So, I recommend that everybody goes into our web portal, creates your account if you haven't, and you're also going to be able to receive our newsletter. We're calling it Drops of Knowledge. So, it'll give you important information about the utility, any projects that we have happening or any other things, conservation tips, which is important. We are a utility that are trying to make sure that our customers also understand that it's important to conserve water and what are some of the good things that you can do to do that. So, that's the presentation that I have. Also, there are phone numbers in our website that you can see if there's a water break or any emergency after hours, you can see the phone numbers there as well that you can notify. So, I have the phone numbers there, you can barely see them, but the after-hours go directly to our water treatment plant, where then they get communicated to our distributions. So, thank you so much. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity and looking forward to always the partnership that we have with the city of Sunny Isles, so we're always here to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is, is North Miami Beach, are they doing anything regarding taking water from the bay? Do you have access to do that through your systems or no?
So, right now, we're not taking water from the bay. All we're doing is from the aquifers. So, all of our wells are in the Biscayne Aquifer or the Floridian Aquifer. So, the only projects that we're doing to assist with the bay is we're doing some projects that are converting septic to sewer. So, we're working closely with Miami-Dade County on their Connect to Protect program, and we have that going on at this time.
Now, how about the runoff pipes that go into the, into the intercoastal? Are those your pipes?
So, those are sewer pipes. So, we collect only the sewer. The water, the sewer treatment is directly through Miami-Dade County Water and Sewer Department.
Okay, but when you, when we have a large storm, we end up getting sewage through those pipes into the bay or no?
No, it's county.
No, that's storm water, yeah.
So, it's all storm water?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. So, there are no sewage pipes that run into the intercoastal at all?
No. No. All of the pipes go to the water treatment plant. The closest water treatment plant to us is the, the one that is close to the FIU North Campus. So, that's the North District Wastewater Treatment Plan with Miami-Dade Water and Sewer.
Okay. So, when people use fertilizers on their lawns and pesticides, that still runs into the bay through your pipes?
Not through the pipes. It goes through the storm water pipes. So, runoff usually goes through the storm water system.
Okay, and that's the city system?
That's the city system.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is?
5C, which is a presentation regarding pedestrian and traffic safety by our city consultant, Paul Abbott.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Congratulations to our newly-elected officers and look forward to working with you all. Last December, you charged us with doing a comprehensive review of pedestrian safety along particularly Collins. There will be offshoot information relative to internal city streets, but the main focus right now is on Collins. We retained Craven and Thompson, who is a consulting engineer who works with the city in multiple ways, more specifically in my direct association is with our Golden Shores Project, and they are recognized traffic safety engineers and experts in the field. They have undertaken five specific tasks, the first being they've obtained a five-year crash report along State Road A1A from 158th Street to 195th Street, all over Beach to Golden Beach. And interestingly enough, in that five-year period, there are recorded 21 vehicular pedestrian incidents just on that corridor. It doesn't deal with the tragedy we had on 163rd and other incidents, but specifically just on Collins, five years, 22 vehicular pedestrian incidents. It's a significant number. Last week, they began intensive field reviews. They are this week collecting pedestrian and vehicular counts, different from a traffic study, which we're doing is another issue for speed reduction and all, but they're actually in the field counting pedestrians and cars and crossings and violations, et cetera, et cetera. They're working on a specific bicycle vehicular crash analysis. The field reviews will all be completed February 21st. We are having an internal workshop and intend to be back to the commission for the March hearing with more defined direction. I do have 13 specific items that they are studying. These are not prioritized, these are just the thought process, but first one is pedestrian countdown signals. You know, we have those where it gives you the seconds and all. We don't have those at every intersection. They want to look at the validity of that. Advanced pedestrian phase for safer pedestrian crossings. That's a fancy way of saying the elevated crossings that you've experienced in other communities, the giant speed tables where people driving absolutely are aware that they are in a pedestrian area, not just with lines and stripes and lights, they have a physical announcement that you're in a pedestrian area. Higher emphasis on crosswalks. That's a broad term, talking about illuminated crosswalks, advanced pedestrian flashing, not unlike the ones that the city undertook at the emergency pedestrian bridge on the intersection of Bay Road and 172nd. A very, very important consideration that I know has been before this commission before, but they are probably putting more focus on this than any one item, and that's the creation of mid-block pedestrian crosswalks with signalization. We've got areas in several portions of this community where you go three or four blocks without a crosswalk. What does that lead to? Jaywalking. The creation of, again, kind of looking at our 172nd situation, the fluorescent flashing light situations, and a more obvious delineation of the particular crosswalks. A sensitive issue, a sensitive issue with, with aesthetics, but a very effective issue is the pedestrian management features, i.e., parallel barriers keeping pedestrians and vehicles separated. Not everybody likes that thought, not everybody likes that idea. It can be very effective on the west side of Collins. It's going to be a challenge on the east side of Collins with the number of, of driveways that we have intercepting Collins. But, but again, one issue that's taking a significant amount of attention, wider sidewalks. We've been talking for years about widening sidewalks where we can, particularly at Town Center Park. The wider the sidewalk area, the better we have to maintain pedestrian access. Another very, very strong recommendation that you're going to hear next month is that enforcement. And we'll, we'll talk about all of these in greater detail. And the one item that we have already initiated, and that's alternate pedestrian ways. As you all may know, if you don't, you will whenever we have the presentation fully ready, is the creation of, right now, the urban trail. It's a walkway from connecting 191st Street in Golden Shores down to the Millennium Plaza, crossing 189th down to the Millennium Plaza. The idea is giving pedestrians an alternative place, a pleasant place to travel versus just walking down the sidewalk along Collins. That's a pretty brief description of the activities, and next month, we will be back to you with the prioritized recommendations and then requesting your direction on, on which you want us to pursue and be ready to take to FDOT for the impending challenges.
Thank you. That's excellent, an excellent survey and overview of exactly, exactly the direction where we, we, we should and ought to be headed. Thank you so much.
You bet.
I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or comments from the commission?
Sure.
I've noticed myself more and more that there are so many people on their phones driving, and I don't believe whatever we do, until we can somehow have front license plates and some type of camera system to catch these people on their phones, and they know that we're watching, then they're going to be less distracted and will have less accidents.
Yes, sir, and that's going to be one of the issues in that category of enforcement and how and what we can do with an enforcement provision, not just for the vehicles, but for the pedestrians. It's a two-way street with everybody participating in this safety issue.
Thank you so much. There, there is a lot of discussion about technology, what can and can't be implemented. Certainly, when we met with FDOT, we certainly got some information from the District Secretary about that, about the different, what technology is acceptable and what's not on state roads and so forth, but thank you so much for thorough.
I'm going to stay here because the next item is mine, too.
Listening to you, it's, it's a breath of fresh air.
I beg your pardon?
Just, just hearing all the, all the potential, it's, it's refreshing, and I look forward to, to, you know, working on making those things a reality. Very, very good.
Very great, great new direction. Great direction for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have the next?
Excuse me, ma'am. Next item is 10H, which we moved out of order, and that... Yes, for, for 5C? Okay, okay. Mayor, you can take the public comments for that.
I don't... Oh, 5C. Ina Trachtenberg? Can you state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ina Trachtenberg. I'm a mom of Anthony Resnick. It happened exactly, almost exactly a year ago, February 10. My son got hit on the 163rd Street by a car. She did not stop at the red light. The driver was driving without proof of insurance and registration. She had no headlights on. She hit my son, and after 14 days in the hospital, we had to bury 11-year-old boy. So, thank you, everyone, giving me an opportunity to speak today regarding Anthony Resnick Act. I would like to start thanking Senator Pizzo and Vans Alupi for working so diligently on the bill called Anthony Resnick Act. Thanks for everyone here for taking the time to hear me and working together to make our roads safer for future generation of kids and adults. We understand we're just one small family out of millions of others all over the state of Florida and around the country, but we hope that Anthony's story, his courage and his legacy, impact and improve the lives of millions of other families for years to come. Anthony was an incredible, loving and happy child. If you ever spend time around him, you know that he's in a constant ray of sunshine, always smiling, laughing, and making you smile and laugh in return. He enjoyed and appreciated the simple things in life, spending quality time with his family and hanging out with his friends. He loved music, mixed martial arts, sports, video games, and chocolate. He had so much love with his parents, siblings, and friends. He had just started middle school six months before the accident. He had just made new friends and began to develop a social circle. Us as a family, we believe that good things come to those do good. To be kind and help others, we have installed this perspective on life into my son Anthony. But there was a glitch in the system. Lighting struck, and the flash system was broken. In an instant, a precious life is taken from a family and a community is shaken to the core. Thousands of people throughout the world pray for Anthony's recovery. We have all been asking why something like that, that would happen to such an innocent and loved 11-year-old boy to such a good family? How can we make sense of something that tragic? I would like to see positive side in everything, but this has been incredibly difficult to accept and understand. People's prayers and questions were answered in a unique way when Anthony donated his organs and saved three people's lives, one of whom is a three-year-old boy who received Anthony's heart. Another major glimmer of hope for future exists here today in this room. People in this room can prevent incidents like this from happening again, ending lives and tearing families apart. If drivers are made aware of consequences they could face by driving recklessly and hurting someone, they will drive safer or may choose not to get behind the wheel at all. The driver who killed my son should not have been on the road that day or any other day. She had 27 citations, multiple-time suspended license, driving through the red light, and she only got a $185 ticket, and she's free. I truly hope, I truly hope that the bill SB 476, otherwise known as Anthony Resnick Act, is passed, and my son will not die in vain, but instead made, made a lasting impact of million people for generations to come. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I believe, is there someone else that turned in there?
I have, I have one for 5C.
Okay. Okay, then, never mind, ma'am. Okay, we can move forward. Okay, the next item is?
5D?
5D? No, we don't have...
Or we're going to move to?
We're going to do 10H.
10H, and then we're going to do the presentation.
Yeah. So, 10H is a resolution approving a second amendment to the agreement with Craven Thompson.
First, I want to thank you for taking it out of order. I, I have to go home tonight, and it's a, it's not a short commute, so I sincerely appreciate your, your willingness to do that. During the preparation of the design for the Golden Shores Project, we encountered three items that hadn't been completely addressed during the, during, during the design, but to keep the bid moving, we provided allowances within the bid. So, these items that we're now needing to pay Craven and Thompson for their design effort are included... for their design effort are included in the Golden Shores project that you awarded a month before last to Stout. So, I want you to know there's no anticipated construction modifications unless the design has significant changes. But this is to get us caught up with the consulting engineer who's dealt with the ever-changing utility situations for the undergrounding, the additional sidewalks that we're going to add along Atlantic, and of course, the urban trail that I mentioned earlier.
Can you refresh our memory on the urban trail and how that's... Just so people know a little bit about that and continue to kind of put that in the...
The urban trail is, as I mentioned in the highway safety, or the pedestrian safety, is going to be a meandering path, six feet wide, going from the extension of 191st. If you're familiar with Golden Shores, 191st Street does not go through to Collins. It merely is a small path that goes out to Collins. We're going to intercept that path and continue north-south along what was an alley at one point in time. It's not an active alley anymore. It's just a utility pathway. And we're going to do a meandering path. The path will have exercise stations. It will have low-level lighting for safety. We've already engaged the police department in a review and analysis of the landscaping and how best to design and incorporate it for pedestrian safety, so you don't create blind spots or dangerous areas. We're going to utilize a relatively new product called pervious concrete. It's a material that's made of regular cementaceous concrete just with a slightly different formula that allows for the concrete to remain porous. It won't, it will help to minimize ponding and any puddling of water on the sidewalk. It lets the actual water flow through the sidewalk itself for a much, much better drainage situation. Landscaping will be enhanced. Like I said, low-level lighting. There will be three emergency call stations directly linked back to the police department. And we will have better representations of that as our design continues for you shortly.
Terrific. Thank you so much for clarifying.
Will we be using the pervious concrete on Atlantic as well?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Any sidewalks that... Well, you're aware of the numerous drainage issues that we have along Atlantic, and it is a perfect way to minimize regrading of the roadway, changing any of the current drainage system. Where it is, it works very well, and this pervious concrete will help significantly.
Yes. And one other issue regarding the undergrounding, how about the fiber? You know, Sunny Isles, Golden Shores has 1960s AT&amp;T copper that's guiding our internet.
Yesterday.
It's the worst.
I apologize. The day before yesterday, I had a lengthy conversation with AT&amp;T. We incorporated in the design for the Golden Shores undergrounding conduit that will accommodate fiber, where the extent of our conversations with AT&amp;T now is relative to cost and sort of like North Miami Beach said. I really would like to address that to you as we come closer to a solution that will be to our favor and not to the utilities.
That's right. So, are we still looking at a year on that?
Yes. We're, well, we're going to start next week with the preliminary work. The delay in starting Golden Shores is the proverbial supply chain situation. We have all the conduit that we need for Florida Power and Light. We do not have the conduit for the communications utilities, Atlantic Broadband, and AT&amp;T. That hasn't been delivered yet. I'm not about to start that project and be two weeks into it and then have to stop because we don't have material. I don't want to answer those phone calls. We're going to have our material and be able to have a full head of steam. But next week, we can start survey work, layout work, and do some of the saw cutting, where the excavation will occur in the pavement.
Excellent. And as far as the electrical, people that don't have undergrounding at their house now, underground electric, they'll have a cost?
We are still under discussion. That's a policy decision that's still with management to determine. There will be a cost. It's how that cost will be absorbed, are attributed. We'll be coming back to you with... We're actually in the process right now of doing 10 homes. There were 10 homes on Atlantic from 186th to 189th that were part of the original Collins undergrounding. It's bizarre to think that Atlantic was part of Collins, but it was. And we're in the process right now of pricing out those 10 homes. And when I have that together, I'll present it to the manager, and then we'll come back to commission on direction. It's a policy decision on how we're going to proceed with that.
Yeah, because there are some households that may not be prepared to have that bill.
Correct. Absolutely.
Do we need to approve the... Are we...
Yes, it's just a motion.
...the resolution? Do we, do we have a motion to approve?
We just open up to public comment.
Okay, public...
But there's no comments, so...
There's no comments. On item 10H?
Did you submit a public card? It's up to them. She wanted to speak on 5C.
On 5C?
Yeah, but let's finish this first, and then we can...
We're in the middle of item 10H. Okay. So, we're looking for a motion?
Motion.
Motion?
So moved.
Is it a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, and again, thank you for your courtesy.
If this, if you want to submit a speaker's card for item 5C? Okay. Okay, we'll continue on, though.
Do we do the proclamation?
Are we going to, are we going to move? We have another, we have another special presentation, correct?
Yes, we can do a special presentation for now. So, which is 5D, that's for Black History Month.
Can we, can we continue?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Have a proclamation?
Yes. Vice Mayor, did you want to say a few words beforehand?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge Black History Month. You know, as Rabbi Kaller said at the beginning, you know, in the spirit of inclusivity, respect, and highlighting that which is good, I think Black History Month is an excellent opportunity to have a proclamation and just honor that. And we do have, we may have some students who wanted to present, and I believe they're here. So, we'll, Marissa, I guess you'll read it, and then they'll come forward?
Sure.
Okay.
So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a Harvard scholar, established the observance of African-American history to reveal the contributions, achievements, and involvement of African-American people in the development of our American democracy. And whereas Dr. Woodson chose the second week in February to observe African-American history to coincide with the birthdays of President Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. And whereas by the late 1960s, thanks in part to the civil rights movement and growing awareness of black identity, the week-long celebration evolved into a month-long celebration on many college campuses across the nation. And whereas in 1976, President Gerald Ford officially recognized the month of February as Black History Month. And whereas the observance of Black History Month provides the opportunity to gain a deeper understanding of African-American history and acknowledge the centuries' struggles for equality and freedom. And whereas each year, the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History sets a theme for Black History Month, and the theme for 2022 is Black Health and Wellness. And whereas this year's theme acknowledges the legacy of black scholars and medical practitioners in Western medicine. And whereas the City of Sunny Isles Beach encourages all people, regardless of race, nationality, or creed, to celebrate black heritage and recognize the contributions black Americans have made toward our society. Now therefore do I, Deanna Robin Goldman, as mayor and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, hereby proclaim the month of February 2022 as Black History Month in the City of Sunny Isles Beach."
Thank you. Ms. Masser, are the students ready? Well, it's, you're in charge.
We have three of our speakers that will present on this regard with civil rights leaders, and we have Maria.
Come on up, Maria.
Lauren and Adriana.
Okay, Lauren and Adriana, come on up.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Maria. I came here to tell you about this famous civil rights lawyer and also jurist. Her name is Constance Baker Motley. Making history and making law are the twin competence of Constance Baker Motley's extraordinary life and career. Constance Baker Motley was born on September 14, 1921, in New Haven, Connecticut. After graduating from Columbia's Law School in 1946, where she was the first black woman to be accepted, Baker was hired by the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund as a civil rights lawyer. As the fund's first female attorney, she became associate counsel to the LDF, making her a lead trial attorney in a number of early and significant civil rights cases. She was the first black woman to argue a case before the United States Supreme Court and became a key legal strategist in the civil rights movement, helping to desegregate Southern schools, buses, and lunch counters. She won nine out of 10 cases argued before the U.S. Supreme Court between 1961 and 1963. In 1964, Motley became the first African-American woman elected to the New York State Senate. And in 1965, she was chosen Manhattan Board of President, the first woman and first African-American in that position. In 1966, President Lyndon B. Johnson named her a federal court judge, the first African-American woman so named. Known as an incisive and capable judge, Motley believed... Motley believed that her presence makes a difference. As the first black and first woman, I'm proving in everything I do that blacks and women are as capable as anyone. And here is the, is the plaque of her. She was honored for a pivotal role in the civil rights movement as a lawyer and jurist, helping to desegregate Southern schools, buses, lunch counters, and successfully argued nine out of 10 cases before the U.S. Supreme Court. There it is. Thanks so much for listening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lauren Zobrin. I'm going to be talking about the accomplishments of Mary Jane McLeod Buffoon. Mary Jane McLeod Buffoon, who was born in 1875 and died in 1955, was a very influential force in the black community in the fight for education, civil, and women's rights. Born in South Carolina after the Civil War, the first in her family not born into slavery, she grew up and eventually became an educator. After moving to Florida, over time, she started a training school for black girls as well as Mary McLeod Hospital and Training School for Nurses, part of Buffoon College, which eventually merged with Cookman Institute to become the Buffoon-Cookman College, as it's known today. She led voter registration drives for women once they got the right to vote and was also in a leadership role or member of several important organizations such as the National Association of Colored Women's Clubs, the National Council of Negro Women, Negro Affairs, the National Youth Administration, the National Association for the Advancement of Color Persons, and the United Negro College Fund. It gave her so much pride to be part of President Roosevelt's Black Cabinet as well as being the only woman of color at the founding conference of the United States. She received 11 honorary degrees from black and white colleges, and even many parks, schools, and streets have been named after her. This is the plaque.
Hello, everyone. My name is Adriani Oviedo, and today I'm going to be talking about Ella Jo Baker, a woman who was involved in the civil rights movement. Miss Ella Jo Baker was born on December 13, 1903, in Norfolk, Virginia. Since she lived with her grandma, she then developed a sense for social justice due to her grandma's stories about living under slavery. As a slave, her grandmother was hurt for not marrying a man chosen by her slave owner. When Ella heard this tragic story, racism and injustice continued to inspire her throughout her life. In the college she studied in as a student, she challenged school policies she thought were unfair. After she graduated in 1927 as a class valedictorian, she moved to New York and joined social activist organizations. Baker joined many black and women organizations. She also once said, "People cannot be free until there's enough work in this land to give everyone a job." Ella created her own organization, which is today called the Ella Baker Center for Human Rights. She wanted justice for everyone and will always be honored and remembered for everything she did for our nation. Here's my handmade plaque. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Mayor, did you want to go back to that?
5C? There, Tanya? Can you, can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Tanya, last name Schneider, and I'm resident of Sunny Isles since 2019.
Your address?
For years, 15901 Collins Avenue, it's at Trump Towers. And I have just one comment, one comment. It's when this tragedy happened with my close friend Inna, her son, it was disbelief, of course, but the outcome is frustrating. So, we're all looking for you, please. Take this matter seriously. There is another incident, accident happened not so long ago with, again, very close friend, an 84-year gentleman, a father. Somebody's husband died, and the driver didn't have license. So, this is like second, there are coincidences like this. It's not a coincidence. People just not afraid to drive without license. The license was suspended. Family didn't get closure. They are still in mourning, and they don't have, they don't have a clue what happened because police didn't provide them details. They didn't have a police report for eight days. Eight days, the family didn't know what happened because police was still investigating, and they're still investigating. So, there are things happening in the city which we see that should not be taking place. Unfortunately, this is what it is, and we would very much appreciate all of you because the traffic is getting worse. It's not getting better. People are still moving to Sunny Isles. People are moving to Florida, to Miami. It's a great, great place to be. We all know that. We, we know. We live here. We know how good it is, and we want to make it safer for our children, for us, for our parents, for tourists. Whatever can be done, maybe we should slow the speed limit to 30. Who's going to get hurt by it? It's not, we don't have to bring any more money to the city, but lower this speed limit. We'll see what happens. Let's do experiment. How much money does it take to lower the speed limit? To 30. And maybe some driver will not go this way because it's too slow, and maybe they'll go elsewhere. We all drive through Golden Beach, right? Who is driving 40 miles an hour there? No one. Because police is there, present, and they'll stop you. So, just things like that. And also, when Inna spoke about Anthony Resnick's act, I'm sure a lot of people don't know what it is. And if someone of you can explain maybe briefly, we would appreciate it.
I have, that's going to be part of the legislative update that I'm going to do later.
Okay, because we don't know what it is. I mean, we know some, but a lot of people don't know. But if this is what's going to change the situation, we're looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Mayor, is item 6A, which is a zoning application. If you can... If you can read your introductory statement.
Ladies and gentlemen, this evening's agenda has two zoning applications. In these matters, the commission sits in a quasi-judicial capacity. The decision of whether or not to approve a zoning variance is not a popularity contest, but must be based upon substantial competent evidence as it is presented tonight. If you intend to provide testimony on any zoning application, you must be sworn in by the city clerk, and you should also fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. We will first hear from city staff and then from the applicant. After this, I will allow anyone from the audience who has been sworn in to provide testimony. The zoning applicant has the right to cross-examine any witness and for rebuttal. Please make your comments concisely. Mr. City Clerk, please read your introductory zoning statement.
In accordance with the LDRs of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, all items to be heard tonight have been legally advertised in the newspaper. Notices have been mailed and posted on the properties. Everyone that will be speaking, please raise your right arm to be sworn in. Everyone that submitted a public speaker card must raise their hand as well. The sworn testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got? Thank you. So the item is 6A, which is a request of West Investment Development and Real Estate LLC for a balcony enclosure at the property located at 17749 Collins Avenue, Unit 1101. And before we move forward, are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed? Thank you.
Good evening. Madam, can we read the companion item for the TDRs as well, please? Thank you.
This companion item is number 10B, and it's a resolution approving the purchase and assignment of transfer of development rights in the amount of 308 square feet of floor area ratio and zero dwelling units from the city's public TDR bank account to West Investment Development and Real Estate LLC.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This item is to enclose a portion of an existing balcony in Unit 1101 at the Mansions of Aquilina project. The applicant is proposing to add and enclose 308 square feet of floor area ratio to the overall square unit, square feet of the unit. If it's approved, this will bring the overall square floor area ratio at Mansions of Aquilina project to 433,562 square feet of FAR. The increase in floor area ratio is through the Transfer Development Rights Program. The applicant is requesting the purchase and assignment of 308 square feet of FAR and zero dwelling units through the city's public TDR bank. The application is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the land development regulations, and staff has no objections as long as all the conditions in the staff report are approved and accepted. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. The applicant is also here as well if you have any questions for them.
We've pretty much...this is not our first rodeo.
Yep, same as all the other ones.
So we're pretty much familiar with this type of TDR, this type of application. So we do have...we do have one public speaker on this.
Yes, you can open up the public speaker and call the person's name.
Jana Baruchovich.
She does not appear to be here.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so if there's no further comments from the commission, we can take a motion.
Can we...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Is this a voice or a roll call?
Commissioner Joseph?
Yeah, hi.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuvassan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Item 6B, and that is a request of La Plaia Associates LLC for a site plan modification for the property located at 18801 Collins Avenue. And are there any ex parte communications for this one? From any other question?
Yes.
Commissioner? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This applicant is seeking a major site plan modification approval. The project's called as La Playa Beach, formerly known as La Playa Baradero. It's located at 18801 Collins Avenue, Sunny Isles Beach. A site plan modification basically is a change in already approved site plan. It's a major change. And I will take you to the history of this project and this site. This site was originally presented to the commission back in 2015 in pursuant to zoning resolution number 15C156. Do you want to take a minute?
Is there some...we're hearing some chatter or some sound? Is there some discussion or can we...thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. The 2015 approval basically was the original site plan for this application. And that application consisted of condominium units, a hotel component, an apartment hotel component. But there were also two towers over a pedestal similar to the one that you have in front of you tonight. And they were, in height, they were 650 feet tall. That site plan approval originally was modified already back in 2016 pursuant to resolution number 16C158. During the 2016 modification, uses as the hotel component and the apartment hotel component, they were removed, basically bringing the project just as a pure condominium. The component also, that they had mixed uses, such as offices, there was also removed from back then in 2016. They were still back then in 2016, two towers, 650 feet each. And this 2016 approval is still active until March 2024. So tonight's application that we have in front of you, that we're going to be discussing, it's mainly a high increase for the two towers. They're increasing five stories, or from 660 feet to 750 feet in height. Both north and south towers are condominium. The north tower has 230 units and the south tower 260 condominium units. Additionally, there is an increase of 281 square feet of floor area ratio for a total of 5.98 of floor area ratio, or 1,228,435 square feet of FAR for the overall project, meaning the two towers plus the pedestal. The application is also consisting and is requesting approval for a conditional use. And this conditional use is to include a private member club. Basically, there are certain uses, such as spas, restaurants, the beach area, that they're going to be consistent of a membership club. Basically, people will pay, similar to a golf club, golf club, club to enter into this club. The uses such as spa is totaling 8,000 square feet. A beach park with restaurant totaling 5,200 square feet for indoor and outdoor dining. Additional, the restaurant is also going to be open to the public. There are also cabanas and guest suites. Further, the applicant is also requesting a shared parking agreement. And what a shared parking agreement is, is basically they're sharing the parking spaces among similar uses, but they're not used during the same time. In this case, the applicant is requesting that share agreement between the spa, which typically is used during the morning hours and midday hours, versus the restaurant, which is at evening use. And they're only insured one parking space, but through the shared parking agreement, they will be satisfying the parking requirements. The applicant is also requesting a payment agreement for the approved transfer development rights and the floor area bonus to be on terms approved to the city commission. At this time, those terms basically are separated into two promissory notes. One for the south tower, which is basically the phase one of the project. They will have 48 months to obtain a building permit. And that moment, whenever they come to a building permit, they will be required to pay an additional 10% of the unpaid balances for FAR and bonuses. And then they will have the principal, will have to pay, be paid by certificate of occupancy. During the time of building permit and the temporary certificate of occupancy, they are to pay quarterly payments on interest. And this interest is going to be prime interest rate plus half of a percent. Then the north tower will have 24 months from the pulling of the south tower building permit to obtain a building permit as well. And they will have a financing deposit requirement as well. They also will have to make quarterly payments over the interest plus prime interest rate plus half of a percent. And their principal is also due at the time of temporary certificate of occupancy. The last request, very simple. The applicant is requesting temporary murals and graphics and then temporary construction fencing. Staff and consultants, we have reviewed this site plan, the conditional use requests and the shared parking agreements, and find that the proposals that are compatible with existing adjacent uses and structures. And in addition, the financing agreement is recommended to include conditions as approved by the city financing director and the city manager. At this point, this project does not have any variances. They are not requesting any variances. And this application is consistent with our comprehensive plan and our land development regulations. And as presented, staff is submitting this complete application with conditions for your review. And the applicant will continue with the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Goldman, members of the commission. Special congratulations to those who are recently sworn in. Congratulations. My name is John Schubin, law firm of Schubin &amp; Bass, and I have the distinct honor and privilege to be here tonight representing our client, La Playa Beach Associates. For your consideration and approval of what I think is just a fabulous site plan for a project at 18801 Collins Avenue. I was not expecting such a comprehensive analysis from your staff, so let me just make a few points to speed things along. First, the applicant is a partnership from two of the most successful developers in South Florida and in Sunny Isles Beach. The first is Fortune International Group, which is represented tonight by Eduardo Imri and his professional team. And they have completed four projects to date in Sunny Isles Beach. The Morenas Resort, Jade Beach, Jade Ocean, and Jade Signature. The other partner is Chateau Group, represented tonight by Manuel Grosskopf, Ellie Klinger, Esteban Kaufsmann. And they've completed two projects to date in Sunny Isles Beach. The Ritz-Carlton Residences and Chateau Beach. Couple of points just to emphasize, going off the script. This is not a new application. It's a modification of a previously approved application, which in fact was modified twice. There are no variances being sought. And as I stand here today and look in the record, there is no opposition to, that has been filed with respect to this project. More importantly, there are numerous conditions that your staff has requested. All of them are acceptable to the applicant. So having said all that, let me turn it over to the architect of the project, Bernardo Fortbracia. You may know him from the Regalia project in Sunny Isles Beach. He's very well-known. Very little for me to say. It's all about the project. Let me turn it over to Bernardo.
Good evening. Thank you for the introduction. I've worked with this client before. I designed the new Ritz-Carlton Residences for them. And I know that I'm very proud to work with them because they always execute the design into every little detail, and they provide a quality product that makes me proud and makes everybody proud. We have a PowerPoint or a presentation somewhere. Oh, there it is, yeah. To the...on both sides, yeah. You see the image of the project. Essentially, it is two ellipses that are standing vertically. The ellipse, as you know, is the path of the sun. And they're staggered from each other, and they're of different sizes. So they're not exactly a pair. They're brother and sister. And they come all the way to the ground to the...to an amazing garden next to the beach. And they are intended to create a profile that you can recognize from afar, both at the top and at the base. And the buildings are thin and vertical. They're thin on their sides, so they present the shortest distance of facade to their neighbors. And they have a profile against the sky that would be lit up at night and will be very visible from very far away, like two lighthouses. It is...the rest of the building is rather minimalist. It's simple balconies that curve at the corners and wrap into the ring of the ellipse. Important about the project is what happens also, not just at the top, but at the base. We have a drive that meanders through a park to reach the top of the podium. We have most of our parking concealed, hidden under that podium that is very low slung. And the balance of the parking is below grade. The engineering of that kind of parking has been now perfected in many places around the world. And we have done the same in the Ritz-Carlton Residences that we did at the tip, the southern tip of your beautiful city. You can see from that view the expanse of landscape. And that is only because, possible because the towers are slender. And that liberates a lot of land, a lot of space, to create a sort of a green setting for the property. There are multiple swimming pools, both to the west and to the east. And you can see the meandering path that makes it through the greenery of the linear park that we propose at the base of the building along Collins. And I think in summary, those are the main points. Between the two buildings, you see that sort of semicircular, sort of nautical shape that is clubhouse, sort of what brings the two buildings together and sort of the meeting place. And it descends all the way down to the water on the ocean side and rises to the top of the deck, to the western pool that is an infinity pool towards the sunset. And those are the main points. We've concealed all the parking, as usually we do, so that loading element, as well as the parking. And we have ample queuing internally within the project so that we will be able to contain the queuing at the drop-off within the property and not extend beyond the boundaries. There's traffic studies that support the calculations that we have done to ensure that we will be self-sufficient internally. You can see there that in those, the drawings are already quite well-developed. And so what we are proposing to you and you approve is generally what's going to be built because the drawings are already quite developed. You see the amount of the parking that I showed you in the previous image, and you can see the amount of drop-off that we have above so that we will be fully functional with vehicular arrival into the property. And I think those are the... And I think those are the main points I can make about, about the design. Thank you very much.
These drawings, these drawings, they were originally drawn when? By the architect? In 2015?
No.
The main plan? Or are they current?
No, they're current. These are the drawings that we have finished right on time to file for this hearing.
Right.
These are very fresh, brand-new drawings, so they're up to the new codes that have been implemented since.
So the idea of adding five floors, that's, these, that those five floors are designed into these?
Into this set of drawings.
Into these drawings?
That is correct.
Okay, so there was no additional engineering that was required?
Yes, we had to recalculate the engineering. We have some very good engineers working on the project, because by virtue of the cylinderizing of the buildings, we had to recalculate the wind loads.
Right, so, so these drawings comprise that engineer, comprise that engineering?
Correct. The sheer walls, columns, and all the new systems, and we've done elevator studies, everything that supports the drawings that you have with you.
Okay. And one other question regarding the number of vehicles. How many vehicles are you considering the two towers will add to our streets?
I don't have the exact number, maybe Patrick, if you can help me? About a thousand? A thousand, there are a thousand spaces within the property.
One thousand parking spaces?
One thousand parking spaces.
And how many vehicles per apartment are you considering?
There are 490 units.
Yeah, there are 400, yeah, there are 490 or 500 units, so two per unit.
And what happens if, if all of a sudden, you have three vehicles to a unit?
Well, we have the ability to valet and stack in several portions of the project so that we'll be able to accommodate them through, through valet. We don't have all valet. We have some parking spaces that are self-park, and some are valet, and when it's valet, there can be parking management that will handle any potential overflow. But parking that we're providing is what your code requires and what generally is the demand. Sometimes people with smaller apartments don't have as many cars, others with larger have many more cars. And in the balance, this is the number that was recommended and that the code properly states is required.
Yes, so how many parking spots do you have?
We have 1,000.
1,000?
Yes.
And that, that also is for the spa and the restaurant?
Yeah, it's all-inclusive, because, but the, the amenities in the project will be valet entirely. They will be managed by valet, and valet will strategize how to organize the parking.
What if you have, what if you're lucky enough to have a full house all year round?
I think that there's enough space in the garage and the driveways and so forth to be able to, to manage. I think a management, a parking management company generally will look at the space and if there's any peak, you're talking, what if there's a peak day, correct? Usually, peak days are unique days, like in shopping malls, you know, they figure out what to do during, pre-Christmas. I mean, there, we will have, I'm sure, peak days, but we believe this garage is so generously laid out that there will be plenty of ways into, to accommodate any potential overflow on a peak if that were to happen.
Okay, I'm just trying to avoid a situation like we had at Aquilina where you need to later come back to us and say you need additional parking.
Oh, I see. I wasn't aware there was an issue with them. But this developer generally will be very conscientious. It's always been the case in the projects we have done with them, and they will, they would generally build what they believe is necessary to have a successful project. And they've retained traffic engineers, parking consultants, and so forth, and I don't think they would take the risk of something like that happening.
It seems like it's fairly close, the number of, you know, vehicles that you can accommodate with the number that you might end up with in the end.
I wouldn't be able to opine on that. I'm not the expert on the parking side. But these were the numbers that were suggested by the, by the specialists, and that's what we've provided. I do have to say, the layout is very, say, in my, in the book of garages, I do, comfortable in the, in the way, the dimensions. I could see that they would be able to squeeze, and a good parking management operator knows how to deal with a garage like this. This is not one of those tight garages that sometimes you see out there. It's very, very generous.
I'm, my consideration is the city and the residents and the traffic.
Sure, of course. It's, I think it's a valid concern. I agree.
Thank you.
The, just one comment. This architecture is exquisite, so thank you for, it's absolutely unique and beautiful. Really exquisite and exquisite, exquisite.
Thank you very much.
I have some questions. Hello. So I just wanted to know, when are you planning to start building? I know that here in the application, you have 48 months, you know, to pull the permit, but obviously, that's, that's a long time. So I just wanted to understand that a little bit, you know, what's, what's the plan to start?
Perhaps, perhaps.
Maybe the owner, I'm the architect, I design.
Just want, yeah, I just, I just had a question.
He's on the, he's on the design side.
Yeah, on the design side. I can explain the sensuous forms, but.
We'll, we'll leave you on the design side.
It's all right.
We'll leave you on the, on the artistic side. All right.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Eduardo Emery, on behalf of Fortune International Group. Good evening, mayor, commissioners. Congratulations on the two new appointed commissioners. To answer your question, sorry, repeat the question.
So, so I just wanted to know, when, when are you looking to start?
Oh, as soon as possible. As soon as possible. Remember, we're developers, so.
Timeframe-wise.
So for, well, okay, so from a plan perspective, producing plans and obtaining a building permit, I would say 15 months.
15 months, okay. Planning and permitting.
Of course, it always depends on market.
Yeah.
Right? So the way, you know, condominiums work is you pre-sell, you pre-sell your, your condominiums, and then you, once you get to a certain point, you start construction, so. But because we're developers, as soon as possible, but realistically, it would be, you know, 15 months.
So breaking ground in 15 months?
Yeah, next year.
15 months, okay. All right. Very well. And then, I don't know if you could explain a little bit about the, I don't know, Cloudy, if you could also assist, you know, the ingress and egress, you know, obviously, you know, Commissioner Joseph asked about how many parking spaces. We're looking at a thousand cars potentially at peak, you know, times, let's say the holidays, whatever. So I just wanted to understand the ingress and egress and make sure that, you know, there's no backups, let's say, in Collins. We already have that issue with trucks loading and not being able to go inside of the buildings, et cetera, so.
Right, right.
That's a concern that the residents have.
That's more of a design question.
Okay, there you go. You're up again.
Do you want to take that, or about the loading?
We have a, a main entrance that has a very generous drive, but you can see that from that main entrance, there's a branch that you can branch off. If you choose not to go, if you're a resident and you want to self-park and you don't want to use the valet, you don't need to clog the valet area. You can sneak it to the right and get in to, to the parking. So you can, that's what it's called, instead of an artery, veins, you know, that you can find other ways to get through. And you can see that we have one to the south that takes you into the parking, and the truck avoids it, too. The truck can go in there, maneuver and back in, and hide under the podium, so it's not visible from neighboring buildings. And maybe you can help point, and you can see that departure, and you see the truck maneuvering there. And there's two ways of getting into the garage. You get one in, and there's a second one, no, on the right, you take the way to the end, and there's another way there, so we have flow.
So your delivery truck for the restaurant would not have to sit on Collins?
That's right. It can actually maneuver, and actually, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, right? Nine, nine loading berths, so there's plenty of loading for not only delivery of supplies, but also for move-ins or.
I wish some of the other buildings built prior to yours would have designed that in as well.
Yeah, we, in our office, we consider this aspect of a building pretty important, because it, it also, it bothers the city and also could bother our own residents, that the trucks are blocking.
Well, I, I get complaints from, from people in your, in the buildings on the east side, so yeah, they, they get annoyed as well from the traffic. They can't get into their own buildings, so it's an issue.
Yes, so we've provided quite a few loading berths, and we also have a second way that is right in, right out at the other end of the property so that we never have any stacking that could occur. We want to have multiple alternatives. So out of that garage, you can see there's one, two, three ways to circulate, so if there's any obstruction by any reason, sometimes multiple cars are pulling out of their space and block the drive, so you get blocked, but you have another way of going around. And so you can see where we are, what we've done with entries and exits in order to make it easier to circulate on the site. And I'm glad you brought up the loading question, because that's one that is a sensitive one in many buildings, yes.
I would actually be more comfortable if you had a provision for at least another 100 cars.
I just have one, one more question. So the setback, right, from the sidewalk to where the pedestal is, or to where the, let's say, the structure is.
Yes.
If you could tell us how, how many feet that is, because I, I've asked this question before, but I want the residents to understand, because there's some buildings here on the east side where you just feel like the structure's right on top of you. It's kind of claustrophobic if you're walking on the east side, on that sidewalk, so if you could just, you know.
Well, the parking podium is 75 feet back.
75 feet back from the sidewalk?
From the sidewalk, from the property line, so even more so from the curb.
So more, okay.
85, I don't, from the curb. That's quite a general, just to give you an idea, 75 feet is a, an Olympic lap pool, you know? It's a, it's a long, it's a very long distance. And you can see, and it's quite low, it's only a couple, two and a half floors that stick out, but the tower itself is pulled back far, far more, I mean, 200 feet or so, you know, it's, it is way back there where we've placed it. It doesn't come right up to you, but also, but above all, also, the podium is not tall and it is far away. I think that walking on the, on the sidewalk, you will really feel more of a park.
Yeah, we don't want to have like a wall.
It's going to be green, because we have a very elaborate landscape designed for that, for that 75-foot linear park, and I think the experience will be more of a green experience than anything else.
I'm very happy to hear you say that. I'm sorry, were you?
That's fine.
I'm very, I'm very happy to hear that in my conversations. That's really necessary. Like, in the previous presentation that we saw from, from Paul, we were talking about that urban trail and the other things that we're trying to do to make this more pedestrian-friendly. And the ship has sailed in, in, in a lot of the city, especially on the east side, when you mentioned the, the building being right on top of you, Alex, I think of the Porsche Tower. I mean, that, that, that is like right up to the sidewalk, and there's like a little, tiny little bed of like daisies, and then, that's it. That's the only thing that's separating the pedestrian from, from the building, and then you have the bus right next to you, you know, three feet over, blowing dirt in your face. We have nowhere to go when you're in that part of the sidewalk. And when we have new developments, I think the important thing is that we have to refocus on the pedestrian experience. We understand you have a lovely project, and, and I'm sure it'll be wonderful, but for those of us who are outside of it and would, would like to also have a pleasant experience going through the city, and if you have that, something more than a little row of daisies, then we'd like to, you know, create, I don't know, like a, a sitting, some benches, some, what did Paul say, the, the vertical, what did he call it?
The drain?
The, the parallel barriers, is that what he said?
Oh, yeah, parallel barriers.
Well, in Hollendale, I was walking, and I found myself in a little section where I had just palm trees, palm trees between me and the cars, and how pleasant that was. You know, I know we have rules and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out, but something so simple that, that I have something between me and the bus, you know? So I'd like to, when you're going through your design, that aspect of it, it's, it's very important, like, that, that we remember the pedestrians.
We have a lot of space, and therefore, we'll gladly coordinate with the city, and we'll show you any adjustments that we need to make, particularly in light of the comment about the proximity to cars for pedestrians, and I'm sure the developer will be able to cooperate. And in our site plan, we have enough room to cooperate, because sometimes you don't have room to offer the cooperation.
But I, I feel like when nothing has been built, there's room.
Yes.
You may not like it from the design perspective, but there's room, because we haven't built anything yet.
And we do have room to do something that can be more organic and friendly, pedestrian-friendly, and maybe pull away the pedestrian from the, from the cars.
Yes.
I think it's a good idea. Thank you for bringing that up.
No, thank you, actually.
Just one more thing, if you would. And I mention this because we have to start somewhere, and since there is an empty lot right now, and we have in the city an idea to try to have somewhat of some type of boardwalk on the beach, I would like to have your input as to what would be possible behind your building on the beach, as far as, what are we saying, stand, 25, 35 feet? What would we need that would be plausible?
Well, we had a preliminary discussion, but there's a lot of, you know, different factors regarding that, so we'd have to workshop that, and it would be based on the direction of, of the commission.
But we need to, we need to actually have a developer who's willing to go along with, we need, we need a first developer to agree to some type of boardwalk, and then we can go from there.
To consider, to consider, to help us to build a beach walk.
If we could get Fortune to be the first developer.
On the ocean side.
That, that agrees to a boardwalk.
I see.
Then we can go from there.
I think generally municipalities have a master plan for, with a big idea, and then it gets implemented as projects come along.
With the county and the state.
And it would be good to have that eventually you develop one.
But we need to have a starting point. So I'm looking to Fortune to be the starting point for a boardwalk.
Yeah, you can.
It's a very broad request, and obviously, we're not prepared to.
It's only a matter of thinking to work with us on it.
We can't agree to something that we don't understand. But what we can do is obviously, when you come up with your plan, we're happy to consider it, and if, if, you know, I mean, I think there's a number of considerations, DEP, Dern, et cetera. So I definitely can't agree to anything without understanding what it is.
I'm not asking for that tonight.
But I think that, you know, after five projects completed in the city, and we've had many requests in the past, we, we will definitely work with staff and commissioners and, and, you know, try to accommodate whatever.
Thank you.
We, we definitely will, we will revisit this issue. As you know, we've all received packets, and we will, we absolutely, I've received requests in the last two days from two different residents about that very issue, but we'll, I'm sure we will be revisiting that in shorts, in short order.
Thank you.
Are we, go ahead.
Unless you have any further questions, we would just ask that you favorably approve the application.
Thank you. We do, we have public speaker, we have public speakers, are we?
Yes.
Okay, so we'd like to. Hagai Schechter, speaker? Ari Steiger?
Are you Hagai Schechter? He's here, we can...
Ari Steiger, 262 Atlantic Isle. I hope you make your decisions not according to the contribution money that you got for the election, but for the conscience of the city. So I hope you make the right decision. Second thing, I developed property in Boca, and every developer that develops property in Boca is giving up four feet on the sidewalk. So they expand. If the sidewalk is eight feet, it's 12 feet. Otherwise, you don't get a permit. So that's something to consider.
That's a, that's a good point, Ari. Understood, understood. That's a good, Ari makes the point. We're, we're revisiting those issues.
Hi. Hello, I'm Hagai Schechter. I live at 211 189th, and I've been living here since 1990 in Sunny Isles. So literally before any of these buildings were here. And I know that, you know, we always come to these meetings, and there's always like, you know, this anti-development in the city. And I just want to say that, you know, I, like personally, if the building is beautiful, if it's respectful of the neighbors, you know, it's, I mean, obviously Sunny Isles looks a lot better today than it did 30 years ago, thanks to the city. So, you know, if, if it's 60 floors or 65 floors, like, I don't think that's what makes the difference. I think the project has to be beautiful, it has to be respectful of the neighbors. And what I would love to see, and what I think is really a much, much bigger issue here, is to take the tax dollars and, like, it looks like we have enough tax dollars from all the buildings that are here, and apply it to safer streets. That's the big issue here. I don't care if this building is 60 feet, or 60 stories, or 65 stories. I care that kids are safe here in the streets. So, I mean, there's been like literally several kids that have died here just in the last couple of years. And I think, you know, if this was one of our children, God forbid, the speed limit would be 10 here, not 35, or 40, or 30. I think a 25 speed limit, I think some more officers on the street. I mean, this doesn't happen in Bell Harbor, it doesn't happen in Golden Beach. And, I mean, this, you know, looks like a nice building. If it's 60, 65, like, who cares? Can we take the tax dollars that we're getting from all these buildings and apply it to safer streets? Thank you.
Thank you. I, I couldn't agree more. Couldn't agree more. We have a Larissa Svechnikov.
Good evening, commissioners. It pains me to be here.
Bring down your mic, Maggie, please.
It pains me tremendously to be here, because it's not about beautiful buildings, it's about the overdevelopment that we have. Every problem that this city has comes from overdevelopment, and it is confusing to even read the agenda. For example, I had the opportunity to reach out to the city manager and to some of you. I got answers that were confusing to me. I'm not anti-development, I think they're exquisite. Do they belong in our city? How many more beautiful buildings you're gonna do? And how much time you're gonna have to give these developers to develop their beautiful buildings with not enough parking and more people than we can handle? These, I don't know how, I don't know what to do. I have worked hard since May of 2018. I've come to every meeting. The zoning is underway. You have just come up with $100,000 to get a zoning, to do a study. And we are giving a developer that has already had 84 months to hurry up and get a wonderful architect that is gonna do a beautiful building, and they're gonna get more months out of you? What are you gonna do when the study says that we have too many people? You go over there, it's not about cars, it's not about buildings, it's not about anyone, it's about people. We have a finite number of people. And I've been told, oh, we're gonna give them more time. They have had 84 months. Your land development regulations say that you get two years. Fine, but now we have the developer telling you that he expects to be constructing in 15 months. But one of you told me that they already have a site approval till 2024. So if he's going to start constructing in two years, why do they need an extension of 48 months to 72 months? Are we crazy? I don't know how to tell you this. We need to stop bringing more beautiful buildings, more cars, and more people, because we are the number one city in density. I love this city. I work hard with every one of you to tell you, stop the overdevelopment. I, this site approval was done in 2015. We know for a fact that in 2015, they were using the wrong criteria to recommend. Do you see this? Anything that you're not...
Turn on the mic.
So you are not, we don't need a boardwalk in the back if our kids are dying in the front. We, in our, in my building, it's 1996, I have 527 parking spaces. And it's enough for us. It will not be enough for spas and restaurants. And then, you know, they come and tell you they have enough. Your staff allow Aqualina to build Aqualina without building spots, and now you're having to do a building across that you also agree. And they told us that it's not going to add to the mayhem. Of course it is, because when you have people in one place and cars in the other, and you have to cross Collins, what do you think you're doing? I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do, because the bottom line is, we got the best here. And it's not enough, because nobody understands. Nobody understands. It's not about exquisite buildings, it's about our quality of life. We cannot continue to try to build these things where people keep coming. There's, we're only, we're small space. It isn't about the developer, it's about us as a city. And I just want somebody to tell me at what point they're going to build something. Because why do they need an extension of 48 months? From when? I was told by one of you that it's not 72 months, but they have already had seven years. And they have already done modifications. Now, there's another issue that I will bring to you. We need to be careful of excavations. Are they building garages underneath? It happened to me. They built, excavated, and I, now I know if my underpinnings are correct or not. They didn't protect my bottom. And you are allowing this to go on, and it's gotta stop, and it's gotta stop tonight. I beg of you, defer, deny, wait. And I'm not saying not to approve this, I'm saying, let's look at the original site approval, let's wait for the study, let's take a pause. You cannot run on overdevelopment and overdevelop. It's just not fair to us.
I have one other public speaker card.
Hello. My name is Elisa Simana. I live at Ocean Three, the building that is gonna be next to this. So my first question is that, is the north tower supposed to be closer to the beach than the south tower? Yeah?
Is this tower...
So in a way, by doing this, you protect the pedestrian, and it's gonna look maybe better from outside. But how is it gonna affect the Ocean Three building, and the view, and the sun, and the shadow? I want to know how close it is from my building. Now, the other thing is, you know, I just want to tell you that I've been living in Sunny Isles for many years. And someone told me, oh, you live in Sunny Isle, I thought you live in Shadow Isle. Because you know that what we say about Sunny Isles, it's not a sunny city anymore, there's always shadow. Because guess what? You keep building and building and building. And at least on the north part of Ocean Three, the Armani changed its orientation so that it's a gorgeous building and it doesn't affect the whole sun. But with this exquisite design, how is it gonna be, what's gonna happen with the shadow? What's gonna happen with the, for the people of Sunny Isles, not only the privileged people like me that lives next to it? What is gonna happen after three? After two? Are we gonna be in the dark? Are we gonna be in the shadow? I'm just asking. Yeah, so no one can answer to me, why do they choose to go even closer and closer to the, to the water? And then this very nice gentleman is saying that we should do a boardwalk, which would, which would be great compared to Bell Harbor and all the other parts of Miami Beach and Broadwater. But how do you expect a boardwalk to be built if, if they build a, a building that is almost, that is so close to the water? And then, I, I don't even know how it could be sustainable that it's so close to the water. But again, I just want to know, as the owner of an apartment at Ocean Three, how is gonna, how is it gonna affect my view and the sun in my pool? It's a right that I'm asking to this architect.
Do you have any, do you have any comments? I mean, in...
What is the answer?
He's gonna answer.
We're 115 feet of linear distance.
Can you speak in the mic, please?
We positioned the building precisely in that location, because that's a T-shaped building. And that provided in that position 115 feet of distance, which is quite significant.
From the, the building next door? Is that what you're saying?
From the equivalent position on the building to the north. Correct.
Which is where, okay, the Ocean Three?
Yeah, Ocean Three. Which if we would have moved it further back, it would have been more imposing and wouldn't have that generous distance. That's far more than most buildings in Sunny Isles.
Be on Ocean Three. Can you, can you say?
It would depend on the time of the day. But totally, I mean, it's...
The rotation of Earth.
But Ocean Three is a T-shaped building, so it casts in the afternoon a shadow into itself. It's because of the form, not being a rectangle. But we have a very thin side in the direction, the way we oriented the buildings, since the sun comes from the south and rotates from the south, we have a thin face of our building instead of the longitudinal side. So we're not a wall to the neighbor, we're just a very thin impact on the, on the neighbor to the north. What we did follows all the codes and follows exactly what the ordinance calls for, except that we have done it in a manner that is very, because of the height, is very thin and slender. And that is the short side that is facing the neighbors, instead of the long side, which has been often done in other buildings.
So if I do recall, there was discussion originally of the design that would have had some sort of an encroachment, but in fact, you're well within the, well within the side setback lines and as an accommodation to basically the northern, the northern property owners. So Ocean Three, in fact, a proposed design would have, would have meant a, a larger encroachment and, and a variance, and, and the developer basically walked back from that to the benefit of, obviously, the proposed site as to Ocean Three. So if you care to talk about that a little bit...
You're correct. We actually pulled away from the edge, and we submitted a design that is fully compliant with the setbacks and the code. That compliance could have also ended up being with a building that is going east-west and would have been casting a lot more shadow, but because of the proportions that we used in the composition, where we are only showing the short end, and we're doing it within the prescribed setback with no variance as requested.
So Maggie, to your point, you know, this is a modification and not a new site plan. And I understand you're...
No, you do not.
I, I do understand.
No, you do not.
But it's okay.
This situation, you're gonna ask to give more months to someone that had already seven years. You can fall in love with that development, but the bottom line is, they told you they are going to start to start it in 15 months, and you told me that the site approval right now is for, for the 24th. So they don't need any extension. Let them be given. And you're gonna give him, and if you're gonna give him the 80, the 72, or the 48 months, from when? From today or from the 24th?
It's from the, no, 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 it's from, it's from site, it's from today. So, you know, under, by, by...
Because it's from the site approval, then what, you're giving him 10 years, 15 years to do this?
But nothing's been built. So it's, it's for 20, the, by approval, by code, it's 24 months from the approval of the site plan modification. So it's adding an additional 24 months, and obviously, the developer wants to, to get permitted sooner rather than later. They're not, they're not looking to...
So for the site approval, 25, what is that what it's gonna do?
So perhaps you...
Mayor, we can't debate it in the audience.
So, okay, if you'd like to, if you'd like to just speak...
No, I'll just...
I want to give, I want to give due, due deference to, to our residents.
So as, as developers, like I said, we always want to develop, right? Because that's, that's our business, right? So if we were in the restaurant business, we would want to serve food. In the development business, we want to develop projects. But sometimes the, the economic or the market conditions, you know, make it too difficult, right? And that's what happened in the past time. So that's, and, and when you have a big project, in this case, two towers, it makes it even more difficult. So for a developer, it's a big challenge to accomplish these types of developments. And this, what has been the precedent in the city is that when you have a big project, they allow you more time, because a lot more things can happen and can delay the process. We, when I said I, we're gonna build in 15 months, I didn't say we're going to build, I said we'd like to be, right? We'd like to build as soon as possible, right? And I think that, I think what you're concerned about is that we don't move forward with development. And in that case, the best thing to move forward quicker is to have a longer timeframe. Because if it's delayed, we don't start all over, but instead, we actually move forward. Because if it's delayed, we don't start all over, but instead we actually move forward. So having the additional time allows us to invest a lot of capital and resources, knowing that we can actually push it through and build it. That's what the additional time allows us. Our intention, I can say this today, is to start as soon as the market allows us and as soon as we can obtain a building permit. Some of these things are out of our control, like a building permit. A building permit today, in this, in today's world, could take a year, nine months to obtain. So I, we can't, we can't start the process and then have a building permit delay us or the market conditions, you know, don't stay where they are right this second and we need more time and we've just, you know, invested two years of work and then not have a permit to pull, to obtain our site plan approval, to, you know, to assure our site plan approval. So that's why we ask for more time. It's been done before. It was given to us originally. And again, the market conditions didn't allow us to build and it's just a reality of the business. But we... Well, it's almost... Right, so, so the first time we approved, we thought we knew, you know, what we knew what we wanted to build, but the market did not accompany us. So now it's chapter two or phase two, version two. Obviously, we feel it's a very much improved version, but now is the time. So getting an approval now will accelerate our, and increases our chances of getting this done quicker, right? And, but if there's delays, we cannot afford to have to come back and start all over, right? Right, but it already happened, right? It already happened once.
Yes.
So that's the point. That can happen and that's why we need more time. Forty, well, no, it's 48 months.
From what, from today?
From today, right. No, so 48 months we have to start, we have to pull a building permit for the first tower, okay? We may, we may proceed with the project all at once, but if we don't, because the market conditions don't allow, then we only have 24 months to pull the building permit for the second one.
For the second, for the second one.
For the second one.
So 48 for the first one?
We have to start construction in 48 months. Yeah, we've done the studies. No, no, not us. I mean, the city has done the study. But just, I want to remind something. There were 346 units on this site when we purchased it. So, I mean, we're developing 490, but there were 346. And I want to address one comment, which is, you know, we're approving 490 units, but there's a likelihood that there'll be less at the end of the day. Some units will combine and consolidate. So that'll be accretive to your question about parking. But again, the timing is to provide us enough time to make sure that this time around, we build it. We've seen market conditions change and we've seen permitting processes change. We've seen COVID hit. I mean, there's a lot of things that can affect the timelines of developers. And when we start, we want to make sure we can finish. So we want to make sure we can execute on the project. Just to be clear, that's been done in the big projects in the city before, including ours.
Would like to open it up for discussion amongst the commission. So Fabiola, do you have any, Commissioner Stuyvesant?
Yeah, the site plan is active. They're bringing five stories more conditional use with a private club. I have all my notes. The financing is like the state of Aqualina. It's just a modification to what is being already approved. So I don't see why not.
This is Mayor Viscara.
And the change is, recall when Claudia explained at the beginning, it's going from mixed use, including hotel. Now it's going to be condos, so it's going towards the residential direction. I'm more comfortable with that. I understand, I, I guess what a lot of people don't understand is that we don't have a lot of discretion in terms of, I can't just say no. No, we have enough buildings. No, 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 I'm not, I'm not speaking to you directly, but, but I just said, we, I mean, generally speaking, we just can't say, we don't, we have enough buildings or just no. Because this is quasi-judicial. There is, there are rights involved and what's required, what I like to call it, coloring within the lines. So they have to follow the rules. They have to color within the lines. And we have very little wiggle room in that respect. And they've, they've done that. They've delivered. They're willing to adjust in terms of the, you know, think about the pedestrian safety and on the, on the Collins side. I, I don't, I just generally don't feel that I can say no as presented. And so for that, I, I would support it.
I have some comments. So, you know, this is a site plan modification. When I saw the previous plans that were approved for 2015, 2016, these structures are much nicer. The other structure was, in my opinion, no offense, was bulky. It was encroaching the way it was sitting there. You know, it's a, it's a much better design. It's thinner. I think it won't be as impactful, let's say, in that sense. And also, the actual use of it has changed. So now it's just condo. You're going to have a private club that's going to be, let's say, limited in a way. And, you know, like Vice Mayor Viscara said, this falls within the zoning code parameters. You know, we're a quasi-judicial board here in a way. And, you know, it kind of checks all the, all the parameters. Also, it, you know, the application itself passes all the levels of service. So I understand what you're saying, Maggie. But we're doing an assessment of our zoning code. But if we're, let's say, this building came after that assessment and we found out some things that we needed to change, that would be a different story. But this is an active, let's say, approval, you know, that is just looking for site plan modifications. So given that, I don't see, you know, I will vote yes for this.
Commissioner Joseph?
Can I get you to change your whole idea on the structure and build like a Broward Center-type structure?
Wrong developer.
It would be nice on the beach and we'd have some more sunshine.
I have to concur with my colleague, Commissioner Lama. I think it's a much more evolved product and absolutely, as I've said, exquisite design and something that will be iconic for our city and our skyline. So given, even though it's an increase of number of units over what was the original hotel site, it certainly is not an increase relative to the originally approved site plan. And it also, again, is, you know, hotels and motels are high-traffic, high-impact. And even though you do have a conditional use for the, for the private club, you're bringing a great brand into the city and, you know, beautiful articulation of design. And I'm comfortable with this project and the extensions that are, that are requested. So I'm in favor of this project.
One thing I will ask, one thing I will ask, though, is that with the staging, please, you know, I'm sure you're going to do it well. It's going to be well-coordinated, but keep in mind that there's going to be other construction sites. There's the Bentley that's probably going to overlap. So that needs to be well-coordinated with our staff and make sure that there's no traffic issues. Again, please, you know, when you have deliveries, make sure that you are strict with them. And you tell them that, to please pull inside the property. So, you know, yeah, and I appreciate that. Yes, yes, I appreciate that because other buildings just... Yeah, yeah, I know. Other buildings is just like, no need here. Yeah, so, yeah.
Just be a good neighbor. Okay, with that, are we moving to a motion to approve? So do we have a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
All in favor? I'm sorry, it's a roll call. I apologize about that, Mayor. Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuvasan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The application is approved.
I think we need a five-minute recess?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Recession is over. Everyone, can you take your seats?
Excuse me, can everyone please take your seats?
Can you take your seats, please? Can everyone take their seats? Hello? Please? We're now moving on to ordinances for first reading. Item number 7A.
7A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending section 74-14 entitled Agenda of Article 5 Conduct of Meetings Agenda of Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the City of Sunny Hills Beach Court of Ordinances to establish a consent agenda section on the city commission meeting agenda, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, before Mauricio does his presentation, I just want to give a little background on, on this item, the consent agenda. There's been a lot of misinformation and false information regarding the purpose of the consent agenda. And as you've noticed over these past couple of months, in a proactive effort to increase transparency, many items have been added to the agenda that you've not seen before. Our agendas have gotten longer, and in the past, there's been items that, for whatever reason, were not brought before you, that we're listing on the agenda now for your approval. We've given you examples of that within the past two months. We want to bring everything before you for your consideration, as well as the public, and naturally, this has caused an increase in the number of items that are on our agenda. This has been met with positive feedback from the public, so they can speak to these items. The purpose of this agenda item is that, and let me be clear, that all items will be presented to you, members of the commission, as well as the public for approval. There won't be any items that you won't see that won't have backup, that won't have a clear explanation, that won't have discussion. The purpose of it is to increase efficiency, and we're seeing some of that tonight. In my discussions and consultations with city clerk and city attorney, routine items that are before you, some are on the agenda tonight. Things like copier maintenance, planting some trees in the park, minutes, those are the kinds of things that would be listed on a consent agenda. All items will be fully listed on the agenda, as they always have been, along with every bit of backup and support, items for the public to review. Any member of the commission may pull an item from a consent agenda for discussion and clarification. The consent agenda allows for these routine items to be approved as part of one motion, and allows, of course, always for any member of the public to speak to any item, including items that are on the consent. This change actually moves public participation closer to the beginning of the meeting than at the end. The public participation part of it is ahead of any of the items that we present to you for consent. Any member of the public can speak to any item, including and especially items on the consent before it's approved. All three governments, Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach County governments use a consent-style agenda. As public participation grows, and our meetings have items that have been added on to it, we want to give the public every chance to speak to these items and present our agenda in an efficient and effective way. Part of the research that we've done for the cities that have consent-style agendas, in addition to Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach County, are Aventura, Bay Harbor, Bay Harbor Islands, Biscayne Park, Coral Gables, Cutler Bay, Doral, El Portao, Golden Beach, Hialeah, Homestead, Indian Creek, Key Biscayne, Medley, Miami, Miami Beach, Miami Gardens, Miami Springs, Miami Shores, North Bay Village, North Miami, North Miami Beach, Opalaka, Palmetto Bay, Sweetwater, Surfside, South Miami, and West Miami. So those are all cities, in addition to the counties, that use this consent-style agenda that we're presenting to you tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mauricio and let him make his presentation.
So just to reiterate what Stan just, just mentioned, this is in no way an attempt to curtail public participation, and much less, an attempt to have anything be approved by the commission without the knowledge of the public. This is strictly to streamline our meetings, make everything more efficient, and much like Stan said, this is only strictly for items that are routine, procedural items that have already been budgeted. And what this does is that it allows for these items to be approved under one single vote. That's all it is. There's nothing else being, happening behind the scenes. And you all by now should have received a sample style agenda, what the consent would look like, and what we did is that we took this exact same agenda and converted it into what would be considered a consent-style agenda. So, and I'll bring it up on screen right now for everyone to see. Let me just take a quick opportunity to commend our media team. Kathy Fernandez and her team, they do an amazing job. If you haven't already signed up to receive email notifications from the city, make sure that you do so. You'll be receiving emails such as this every month when the agenda is published. They send out these emails that look just like this, and if you go here, if you click on View Agenda, it will take you to our city's website, where we have all our commission meetings that are coming up and in the past. And you'll notice here that the current meeting is in progress, and if you click on it, it'll bring up the video of this current meeting, and it'll have its agenda. I created this meeting for tomorrow. It's not a separate meeting that hasn't been noticed. It's just a sample. And if we were to click on it, it'll bring up what would be a consent-style agenda. Everything that would be listed on this agenda is just the same as it is right now. Everything will be published, everything will be visible by the public. If we scroll down, just said, you'll notice that we changed the order of the items. And as Stan was mentioning, we moved the section right here, number five, used to be 13, or is 13 right now. And this is the section where the citizens can address the commission and bring up any items that they wish to speak on. So we did this, we moved it up to the beginning of the meeting to give the public an opportunity to be able to speak on any item that's on the agenda. Still, ask your questions, if you have any questions that are, that you have on any items that are placed in the consent agenda. This also allows, you know, for the public to not have to wait until the end of the meeting, much like tonight, where the meeting is already running over three hours. If we keep scrolling down, you'll see section six, which is a consent agenda, and you'll see that these are the routine items that we're speaking about. The approval of the minutes, the approval of health insurances, the copiers. And if you click, for example, on this item where it says memorandum, you click on it, it'll bring you to the memo, the explanation of why we, why staff is requesting the approval of this item. It'll include the resolution, it'll include the quote, contract if it pertains to, to a contract with a, with a vendor. And pretty much, everything remains the same. All the information is still available on the city's website, and nothing will be approved without the knowledge, without the public first having been noticed about an item for approval. Aside from that, just to reiterate what, what Stan said, there are many municipalities that use a consent-style agenda. There are 34 municipalities in Miami-Dade County alone. Out of those 34, 29 cities are using or have a consent agenda. There's only five, one of us being one of them, that do not, do not use it. And including the three bit counties in South Florida, which are Miami-Dade County, Broward County, and Palm Beach, all use a consent-style agenda. So again, I'll, just for emphasis, it's not in any way to curtail public participation. It's not an attempt to approve anything without the public's knowledge. It's just simply to streamline these meetings and make them more efficient and less, less time.
Ready for public comment? Okay. So we have a bunch of speakers here. Ina Trachtenberg? Is Ina here?
No, no, she left.
Okay. Mark Kenevsky? See here? Lou Thaler?
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations. I come here, I, I think what was sent out was not clear at all. I, I think that that's where the problem overall is. You do not mention that the public can question it. As a matter of fact, if I read it here, it doesn't say it at all. I, I think that combining it at the end, I can, I can understand that. But that's not what, what you sent out, and that's not what the paperwork here reads overall. And I can, and one of the things here, you have controversial items, non-controversial. Well, what's not controversial to you might be controversial to me. So as a person in the public, I want the right to question it. That doesn't say that on here, at all. So I, I think that you need to resubmit this and send it out to the public. I must tell you that I was at a, at a luncheon today, and I have never been questioned on an item more than this, even on the elections. People had ideas. Here, they had no idea on what they were questioning. Now, I, I come up here, and this is only the second time since I was a commissioner in 12 that I have stood here, but this needs to be spelled out. It, it looks like you're hiding something from the public, the way this has been, been laid out here. Now, I either come back with it next month, correct it today, however you want to do it. I think that that's what this needs at this point. I thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Jana Beruchevich, is she here? No. Lennid Renlib? Lennid Renlib?
No.
Just object.
You object? Okay, thank you. Leovav Vernoda?
Just object.
Malka Shahar? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Malka Shahar. I live in Winston Tower 700. And I would like to mention, we don't need any transaction, transition, and you wanna, it smell like you want to hide something from the people. We want to discuss any details what you want to do in here. Because we're the people, and we are government from the people, by the people, for the people. And I came from Soviet Union, and I know when, you know, the government decide, and we not involved in your decision, and you trying to do with the package, and you trying to save the time, and I don't know wherever you have explanation. But I, I believe in American value, and I want to see, and I want to practice my rights in here. So I object 7A. Thank you.
Thank you. Yulia Kinkas?
I object as well.
Tatiana Svetchen? Larissa Svetchen? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hello. Hi, everyone. Congratulations again, Fabio and Jerry. Larissa Svetchen, 19140 Atlantic Boulevard. So I originally had something that I was going to state regarding the history of the city, but now that Mauricio explained it, I very much agree with what Lou Thaler said. This is very confusing. I was asked about this ad nauseam. So I'm going to save time by not reading this, but I want to ask. So the question about the memo, is each item going to have an attached memo? Because right now, items don't. Actual items on the agenda, they'll say memo, you press memo, and it's a blank piece of paper that says memo.
Yeah, though the problem with that is that whenever we have updates to the agenda, it sort of kills the link that was previously sent out. So we're working on that, but I can tell you that all the memos that, all the items that are on the agenda have a memo attached to them.
But how do I access it if it can't get to it online?
We're working on to, to fix that issue. It shouldn't be. If there's something that's listed on the agenda and you can't see it, you know that you can call my office. you can call my office, and we will provide you with the--
Don't you think that that's an unreasonable--
No, no, I, I understand, but we'll make sure that everything is, is published online.
Okay. So that's gonna be part of the ordinance? That it's going to be guaranteed to be published online, a memo?
It doesn't have to be part of the ordinance. It's just, it's part of the, the management of the ordinance.
So there's no guarantee then that it's going to be part of it?
No, what I can do is that I'll revise the memo between first and second reading. I'll explain it, I'll address Lou's comments, and make sure that it's completely detailed and understandable, so that there's no questions about what the purpose of the ordinance is.
Okay. And so, so anybody can come and speak on any item without permission? So the commission does not need to vote to allow a person to speak?
No. No, it's, it's, the citizens' forum is the same as it is right now. It's just being moved up to the beginning of the meeting, so that if anyone from the public has any questions on an item that's on the consent agenda, they can ask their questions at that time. And if the commission feels the need to pull it out of consent, they can do so and move it down to resolution, so that it can be considered on its own and discussed on its own.
So then when do they get to speak on items after the consent agenda?
When we get to, to that section.
So, okay. So it's not discretionary. It's definitely going to be allowed, no matter what?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Well, then, I, I agree with Lou. I think that there's so much confusion right now, and people are so upset about this. It would be my recommendation to wait until you've actually clarified it, because as I pulled up the agenda today at the meeting, I saw your sample, and I'm like, what the heck is this? So it's very confusing. I think that in the effort to be transparent, if that's what you're attempting to do, then I don't see any, there's no reason to rush this.
So it's, it's, it's first reading, and between first reading, we can amend the ordinance if we need to, but I'll revise the, the memo, so that when it's published next month with the ordinance for second reading, it'll be detailed.
I understand that, but all these people came today, so you're asking them to come back again and trust that it's actually done.
Well, they'll be able to see it online.
If it's updated.
It will be updated.
You prom--
For sure.
You guarantee.
Guarantee.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you state your name and address?
Stan Friedman, 209 Puente Island Drive, Sunny Elbitch, Florida, 33160. The way seven A is written now, I'm object for the record, okay? If you're gonna clear up what you said, please put it in the paper, and then we reconsider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Greg Capra, Puente Island Drive. What you explained sounds very reasonable, saving time. One of the questions that I think everyone would like to know is, how much time are you actually gonna be saving? Saying things that are just routine type of things, which I've seen happen in many meetings, where you say, okay, this is something that has to be done in the city, and we have to approve such and such, and everybody says, yes, okay. So with that being said, if you had seven, eight items on the agenda that were routine city items to fulfill, and you did that, how much time would you actually save doing it? I think one of the concerns of everyone is, first of all, the transparency thing. Question, what are you trying to hide? Maybe nothing. But that being said, if you said, well, you know, tonight's a long meeting, you said we're, we're gonna be saving a half hour because of those things, most of us would feel you're here once a month. If you had to spend an extra half hour, that's not asking too much of officials that are here. On the other hand, if you said, well, in this particular meeting, we have so many things that on this agenda, it's appropriate to have this type of an agenda, and I think everyone would feel comfortable with that, versus you might be saying, we're gonna do this on a continuous basis, and everybody's, why is this happening when, I mean, I've seen agendas where, you know, you guys complete it in an hour, it's not a big deal. So, I mean, if there was some flexibility to how you explain that to everyone and said, hey, you know what, like tonight, would we have saved a half hour out of this lengthy meeting? That's a reasonable thing for everyone to understand, versus here's a blanket situation, and say, we're just gonna pass this, and that's the way it is. So that's what I would suggest how you explain it to everybody. Certain meetings possibly, we're gonna be doing it, or, you know, everybody is concerned, not just here, just government in general. It's not trusted. So try and be more transparent.
If there's no other public comment, then we can have--
No other, I have no other public speakers for that. No other comments.
No comments from the commission.
Any comments? Anyone like to, to discuss this?
Yeah, just, okay, just for the sake of clarity, right? Let, let's, let's envision this, right? So let's say Sylvia has an item, right? Let's say there's three or four items in the consent agenda. Sylvia comes up with item number one, and she needs an approval to take care of the, you know, of the parks, let's say, maintenance of the parks. She'll come up, she'll present the item as she usually does, right, in the regular agenda, and then people could come up and talk to that item, right, if they have some sort of comment on that, right? Then Tiffany comes from finance for agenda number two. She'll come up, ask us for our approval, she'll do her presentation, and then somebody else could come up from the public and, and comment on that, correct?
Correct.
And so on.
Correct.
Right? Okay. So what's changing here is that instead of us going one by one and approving these administrative items, right, we'll just do one approval.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So the one, each person will talk to that item from the, from the city, and two, the public will talk to that item.
The way the agenda's currently structured, that's how it is. If the consent agenda is passed, that changes slightly, where the staff member wouldn't have to present anything that's on the consent agenda, unless it's pulled from the consent agenda.
Unless it's pulled, but the public can speak to that.
The public can speak to it, which is why we moved the citizens' forum from thirteen up to number five, the beginning of the meeting, which is also--
Repeat that again, I'm sorry.
So, so the reason why we moved citizens' forum from thirteen at the end of the agenda, and we moved it up to number five at the beginning of the meeting, is to allow the, the public a chance to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda. If they have questions, they have concerns, they can address it to the commission. The commission has a choice to either ask, answer the question in that moment, or pull the item altogether from the consent agenda and have a separate discussion on that one item.
Okay.
So that's, that's what it is. And just to mention, that's one of the complaints that we received from several residents, where they have to wait these long meetings to be able to speak to the commission--
Understood, yeah.
--at the end.
Yeah.
By that time, they're tired, they wanna leave, whatever reasons, they have to leave. So in consideration for that, we moved it up.
So the consent agenda will be at the beginning--
After public comment.
After, after the public comments.
After a public comment.
Yes.
Yeah. And then, still, obviously, the, the, the consent agenda, it'll be itemized, you'll have the different items printed out, and people could come up and talk to, to those items.
Yes.
So if a resident feels strongly about--
No, no, I can fill it out, yeah.
--the copier contract, we open up public comment, the resident comes up and says, why aren't we, I wanna talk about the copier contract, we, we're still using Toshiba and sort of, and they can have that moment. And then the, the staff member, I guess in this case would be Derek, can then respond to that at that moment, if necessary, and we can have that conversation at that time? Or, or that's where we say, okay, well, if that's, this is an issue, sit back down, and we'll, we'll, we'll put it in the regular agenda, and then we'll have the discussion then?
Right. So technically, the public needs to address or ask their questions through the mayor, and then at that point, the mayor can either instruct the city manager to answer the question, and he can in turn defer it to a staff member, or if the commission, any commissioner wants to remove that item to have a separate discussion, then they can do so at that time. And just to point out and, and clear up, that these items that are listed on the consent agenda can be pulled unilaterally by any commissioner. It doesn't need an approval from anyone else.
And if there's no issues, okay, we have the photocopier, we have the swing set, we have like five routine things, which I agree with Lou Thaler. I, I think the use of the word non-controversial and controversial has to go, because that's, that's subjective, so, but if, we could use, you know, if it's standard, routine, you know, regular--
Procedure.
--procedural, you know, the swing set, the copiers. If nobody has any issues with that, then we, we make a motion for the consent, and we say, okay, approved. So six issues get put aside, and now the staff members can go home. They don't have to sit here for the whole meeting, awaiting, you know--
Or, or the public, the public doesn't have to wait till the end of the agenda to--
To make their comments.
--to make their comments on--
On those issues. But they would have to wait if they have something to say about something that's not on the consent agenda, because we'll still have the public comment on those individual issues.
Yes. And again, this, this is for ministerial procedural items, like the minutes, like simple contracts. Ordnances for both first and second reading are completely separate, and will have their own separate discussion.
We're not gonna put two buildings, a zoning matter on that, that's not gonna happen.
The zoning applications are still separate, because those require public hearings. All the important items are still separate and still have their own separate discussion and their own separate vote.
I agree with you, too, but I think the one major thing in what you're saying fits in. The major thing is that you don't have the public in here, and that's the point that I'm making. You need, in, in the article here, or, or the resolution that, that you have, you need to put the public. If you look at it, you have the city manager, you have the manager, you have the commission, you don't have the public. So you need to add the public. I, I understand what you're saying, and, and I, I agree with some of the verbiage, but I think the major thing, and, and what's upsetting, or upset the people that spoke to me and spoke here, is the fact that you, based on this, if this goes through, you don't have the public speaking at all.
Okay.
So I think that's the major thing.
Ed, Ed, can you, can you speak to that? Because I'm, if that's a, if that's a valid concern, I wanna, I wanna hear it.
I don't understand the concern, because it clearly shows that E is citizens' forums, petitions, and other communications, and F is the consent agenda. So the public will be able to speak on any of those, on, on any--
It doesn't spell it out.
On any of those--
It spells out, it spells out the city attorney, it spells out the city clerk--
You're not--
It doesn't--
That's right.
--spell out the public.
You're not gonna get--
That's what they're upset about.
You're not gonna get to pull an item off of the consent agenda. It's not your, it's their, their agenda.
But they can still speak to it.
You can still speak on the issue.
Public should have the right, and based on--
Well, that's up to you guys.
You need to rewrite the whole damn thing and come back first. It is wrong. It's wrong the way it's written.
Yes, I agree.
Do we need to, are all the, there are twen-- out of thirty-four municipalities in Miami-Dade County, twenty-nine have adopted a consent-style agenda. Are there variations to that theme, or are they all uniform--
They're not uniformly--
Uniformly drafted?
They're not.
Is there something that speaks to what Lou is saying about, you know, public forum or citizen input?
Let me read the one from Broward County, okay?
Okay.
"A portion of the agenda shall be designated as a consent agenda, and all items contained therein may be voted on with one motion. Any commissioner may withdraw any items from the consent agenda, and it shall be voted on individually." That, that was there in nineteen ninety-nine, when I became the county attorney, and it's been that way for the past twenty-three years.
So, but to, to, to lose pointer, to clarify that issue, it, when you have the public forum, the citizens' forum at the top of the agenda, that can, that is a platform for any, any public speaker, any resident, to come in and say, this, this particular item, seven A or five J, on the consent, on the consent format, I can speak to that item. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
So there's a, there is a platform, and I'm not, if it has to be rewritten or evaluated, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, but what I'm saying--
Defer, it's gonna fix it.
But, but if we, I'm okay with that, but the point is, is that, is that what I'm hearing, that, are you, is the concern that the public is not gonna have a forum or a voice--
That's what the public believes, yes.
But, but that's--
But that isn't what it says.
I don't, I'm not sure that that's correct.
The way it's, the way it's spelled out--
Okay, okay, fair enough.
It's almost a verdict, which is what I'm saying.
If it's not well articulated, and there's confusion in the marketplace, I, that's, that is a perfectly legitimate comment.
Yeah.
But what I wanna know is, are, is every consent-style agenda, every format in every municipality the same? Is there something that we're not communicating, or, you know?
I think the confusion there is in the memo, okay? And between now and second reading, we'll rewrite the memo to explain exactly what is going to happen. But there's no--
I think, listen, if everybody's all bent out of shape about this, can we just defer, instead of doing a second reading, to the next, to the next meeting, and then we'll, we'll have the memo, and we'll well articulate--
Sure.
And then, because it seems to me, based on this discussion, what I'm hearing is from the audience, that, well, we didn't quite understand it, maybe it's not as bad as we thought, but we just didn't really, you didn't explain it well, right? It sounds like a lot.
No, it's not.
Okay. So--
Yes, fifty about one.
Okay. But if, if the idea is, no matter what we do, you know, there are gonna be certain people that are gonna object--
You don't believe in the way it was.
What?
You don't believe in the way it was.
Well, we, that's, that's two different--
Twenty years is worth to this city.
But, but, but there's two different issues.
You're gonna say that half a month--
Okay, everybody, okay, everybody, okay, everybody.
Okay.
All right.
We're not Dade County, we're not Broward County.
Yes, we are Sunny Elbitch.
It's worth it, twenty years.
Twenty, twenty-nine out of thirty-four.
Doesn't make any difference, we can be different. We can be more--
We're small and close enough.
We can be more attentive to what our residents want, and our residents want transparency. And anything that takes away, or is perceived to take it away, is detrimental to the city.
Okay. So--
It's a perception issue. It's a perception.
It's optics. Okay. Okay. So, um, do we have any other comment or speakers, or, so the city manager would like to address any, you know, is the memo, do we need to, we need to get a new memo, or read a different memo, or get the memo to begin with, or?
Mauricio and I can certainly revise the memo between now and the next meeting. I think at the opening, I clarified that the purpose of it for it is for efficiency. Back in the past, we've had meetings that were forty-five minutes, and that's not happened in these past many meetings. As a matter of fact, they're getting longer, because we're bringing things to you that require a lot of public participation. So I think I've made it clear that, and I think it's understood, that it doesn't limit public participation in any way. Actually, we're moving the public participation or part of it up to the beginning of the meeting. So it seems like it's just a matter of us clarifying the memo and bringing it back to you next month.
So then, I'd be, I'd be happy if, if we have a motion to defer. Do we have a, do we have a motion to defer, or is it really comfortable?
Yeah, I agree. It's a, it's a, you know, we clarified, I don't think there's anything fairing going on here. I think it encourages more participation from the public, and, but yeah, either way, I'm, I'm okay. I'll throw, I'll make the motion to defer, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Al. I think this can get fixed either way, if it makes people feel better, you know, adding another month to it. But I also think we need to be open to, to moving things along. I mean, if, if it saves half an hour, then that's half an hour. If it sends, if it sends staff home earlier to their families, then that's a good thing. If it allows the residents to speak earlier, so that then we don't end up with--
I think that's, for me, that's the main point.
We don't end up with cards, and the person has left, then that's, that's--
For me, that's the main point.
That's a good thing. But let's, if it needs more evaluation, that's fine. I think either way, it gets cured, whether we do a second reading or we defer it, it's fine. But I think it's, it's worth exploring. I, just because it's, and if it doesn't work, if it ends up not working, then it doesn't work.
And just to--
But at least we try it.
And just to clarify, we did have a discussion item about this previously, correct?
Yeah, we did.
So this was not, we're not springing some major, major grenade out there. We, we did have a, we did have a previous public discussion about this, so.
And it, and it will take an adjustment. I went to a, a commission meeting where they do the consent agenda, and, and I've never sat through that, so this is, I'm used to this. And it was, it was a little tricky to follow, but, but then, once you understand what it is, you, you know, I, I think it, it's just gonna require some, some adjustment on our require some, some adjustment on our part. But if it makes it more efficient, if it actually does do that, then it's worth it.
Okay.
It depends on how many items there are on the agenda.
We're, you're, if we, if we defer, if we have a motion to defer, then you all can come back the next time and voice your pleasure or displeasure.
My feeling is, if it, if it's just, if there's one incident where something slips through that shouldn't have, then it's not worth it.
Exactly.
Exactly right.
Well, that's, that's, that's all part and parcel to a commissioner. A member of the commissioner, a member of the commission pulling an item from the consent agenda to say, you know what? I, I wanna speak to that topic, or I'm concerned about those copiers.
We had add-ons just before the meeting today. You know, sometimes there could be things, I'm not saying there would be, that might not be caught. Okay?
Right, but they wouldn't, if.
I mean, we're all pretty much on the ball.
Let me clarify. If an item is, is an add-on, it would not be part, it would not be considered part of the consent agenda, correct? So.
Correct.
So that would, that would, it would fall through the cracks, so to speak.
Right. There would not be an add-on item that we, that was added on to consent.
However routine.
Correct.
Okay. So if we have a, we have a motion to defer and a second motion?
Yes.
All in favor? Second? Second? All in favor?
We need a, oh no, this is just a.
No, it's just a deferral.
Deferral, so.
It's a deferral.
We just have one speaker.
Oh, we have a speaker?
Yes. I just wanna thank each and every one of you and your service, trying to do the best you can in any way you can, and listening to us and correcting. And I was just gonna say what he had said, for years ago, 'cause I'm here forty-eight years. And I thank all of you. Because I sure wouldn't wanna be in your seat. Thank you. Bye now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. We are on Mauricio, item ninety-nine B?
Yes. Ordinances for second reading. It's an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach for amending chapter ninety-nine of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Hills Beach titled Public Health and Safety to create Article Five, titled Regulation of the Release of Balloons, providing for a prohibition on the intentional release of balloons, providing for penalties, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for an effective date.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is the second reading of the balloon release ordinance. And upon your affirmative vote, it would be effective.
Any public, any public, no, I don't have any public speaker cards. So I'm in favor of this. I'm in favor.
I'll make a motion.
Wait a second. Roll call?
It was a roll call. Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Commissioner Suvasan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscaro?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Item ten.
Ten A. Ten A is a resolution approving the selection of Cigna Healthcare as the provider of employee health insurance, Cigna Dental as the provider of dental insurance, IMED as a provider of vision care, Mutual of Omaha as a provider of life insurance, accidental death and dismemberment insurance, long-term disability insurance, voluntary short-term disability insurance, and voluntary life insurance for a period of one year.
Honorable Mayor and Commission, this is the annual renewal of the city's insurances. As Mauricio mentioned, it's the health insurance, dental vision, and our life and long-term disability insurances. We work closely with our broker to get the best rates possible. And after some negotiations with Cigna, we received a proposal with a seven percent increase to medical and a four percent increase to dental with no plan changes. Now, these are based on, obviously, claims we've received through the past plan year. We also received a rate pass for our vision insurance and life and disability insurances. And these are the proposals we're bringing forward tonight for your approval.
No public speakers?
Good honor.
Right. So get busy, Alex. Get busy.
Okay, a motion to approve?
Can I have a motion?
Yes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We want our insurance moving.
Next item is ten C, a resolution confirming the balance of transfer development rates currently held in the TDR bank accounts by the City of Sunny Hills Beach and private owners.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, this is our annual TDR report, Transfer Development Reports program. Through the years since this program has been incorporated in two thousand and four, we had acquired properties which had yield to two-point-three million square feet and one thousand, one thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dwelling units from all the properties. Currently, in the city program, we have left four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-five square feet and two-hundred-and-forty dwelling units. As a matter of an example, for example, the project that it was approved to today actually received two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand square feet in TDRs. So that is more an idea that we have left in the bank. We also in the report, we have shown the monies that we have been accumulated over the years from this program. And also, we bring this, the report for the private TDRs account. Currently, we only have one open account for TDRs, and the other ones, they had been either assigned or they had been extinguished because they had been assigned to other projects. So with that, if you have any comments, we'll be glad to answer them.
I'd like to acknowledge the architect of our TDRs, Mr. Norman Ettlecup. Thanks for the hundred-million-dollar gift that just keeps giving, right? What, I'm sorry?
I say you're more than welcome. The city certainly has benefited by the TDR.
Absolutely.
Hundred-and-three million and counting, right?
And that doesn't include any interests or any other financing agreements or other agreements. This is just the net money. So definitely it's greater than a hundred and three.
It doesn't include the bonuses either, right?
Does not include bonuses, correct.
So we have, we have relatively few TDRs left, right, in the TDR account?
That's correct.
So that's, but there's still the private, the private TDRs or private banking?
No, the private bank, it's almost, the plan is also, we only have nineteen-thousand square feet.
That's.
For one private owner, and those are restricted. So, and the other ones, they had been assigned to projects, so.
I do have a question. That restriction can be lifted, can be, instead of being only for the west side, can be lifted and changed to the east side?
In the past, they had been, those type of restrictions, they had been lifted. They had been brought those requests to you for approval, and they had to pay the difference because those TDRs, they were, they were paid at a price dependent on the site that they were received. So if the applicant at that moment agrees to pay the difference, it can be considered.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Do we, there's no motion.
There's no public comments for this. So we just need a motion to approve.
I'll second. Okay. Item ten D.
All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ten D is a resolution approving an agreement with the Coradino Group to provide professional planning and consulting, zoning consulting services.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, tonight we have the agreement in front of you that it will bring the new planning and zoning consultant, also including engineering services. This agreement presented to you is for one year with four options to renew of one year. The company that it was ranked first is the Coradino Group, and they have waited patiently, and they're here tonight if you have any questions. And this contract is for an amount not to exceed a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And these services are going to cover basically plan review, site plans, traffic, and civil engineering, and any other planning and other services. A percentage of these services also, they will be covered through cost recovery during site plan applications.
Are they presenting?
No. I mean, if you have any questions, but they don't have anything to present.
Wait, hello. Wait, hello.
Joe Coradino and Catherine Lyon, yes.
I was looking, yeah.
This is just a contract to enter into the agreement, into the services. I'm sorry.
We have a public, we have a public speaker card? Name and address for the record.
Ari Steiger, two-six-two Atlantica. And I think it's a waste of a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars with taxpayer money. We have zoning and planning and whatever Claudia, that she does a magnificent job. You saw with the project that they bought this evening here. Why do we need a consulting? For what? She does all the work. Why, why waste the money?
We've, we've had an outside consultant historically, which was the Calvin Giordano, who served in that capacity.
Who not for zoning and.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Calvin Giordano did planning or whatever, but not zoning.
And, no, that's, that's to clarify.
I think it's a waste of a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for no reason.
To clarify that point, we had Calvin Giordano, which it's basically the same. It's a substitute and.
It's also, it's also engineering and.
The traffic studies.
I brought contacts to the city back fifteen years ago.
And most of that gets, most of that gets reimbursed by the, by the developers, the applicants who, who bring their applications for site plan approval.
Right. It's a traffic.
What's the reason for it? For what? I mean.
We don't do that internally.
She does everything and she gets paid for it, so.
No, but the thing is that those, we can't pay more than one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. But we only pay if we use them. If we don't use them, we don't have to pay nothing.
No, it's a contract for a year.
Correct.
It's not if we use it.
Not to exceed that amount of money.
So if you use a hundred hours, and you're gonna have to use a hundred and fifty.
We pay them for, they bill us the hours that we use them.
So a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is what? If they bill for a hundred hours, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars? They're gonna bill for two-hundred hours?
The maximum that we will pay if we use their services.
So again, we had.
I don't agree with it.
So we had the equivalent services from Calvin Giordano historically, correct?
Correct.
So it's, it's just a substitution of vendors.
When the city didn't have the zoning, when the zoning, we didn't know where the hell is going to, then we had Calvin Giordano. I bought Calvin Giordano to the city back in the beginning. And we didn't have any zoning and, you know, what we have now, especially now that it's coming to an end, all the buildings and the rest of it. So I think it's a waste of money.
I have no other public speakers for this, for this item.
Motion to approve.
Motion, move to approve?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ten E is a resolution approving the expenditure of budgeted funds with Toshiba Business Solutions for a four-year lease of four photocopiers.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commission. The item before you is an agreement with Toshiba to replace four copiers at Government Center and Pelican Community Park. If you have any questions, I may have a good answer.
Are they good copiers?
Yes.
Mayor, I feel like you all need to ask him some questions about the copiers. Putting him on the spot.
Would you like us to be on the consent agenda, Derek? So you could have been home by now. Yes.
This would be a, an example item that would be on the consent agenda.
And where are they going to be located, all of these copiers?
Two of these machines are at Government Center. It's the two machines with the heaviest use, the third-floor building department, fourth-floor city clerk machine, and two machines at Pelican Community Park, which also get an extensive amount of use.
One is to replace, the one is to replace an old, an old copier, correct?
Yes. The smaller copier at Pelican Community Park.
What are they, laser?
Yes. Two are color, two are black and white.
And the size of the paper that goes.
Mayor, I was only kidding about the question, so. We approve this basically every year, so.
Let's drill down. We don't want, we don't want a consent agenda for those copiers.
Yeah, I gotta apologize to Derek now.
Lots of questions. Let's get granular here.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
And do the second, second?
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ten F is a resolution approving an agreement, I'm sorry, approving a second amendment with the, with G Concrete Development, excuse me, for the Bella Vista Park reconstruction.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, city staff. This amendment is, or this agreement, or amendment to the agreement is to basically fill a gap with the contractor between the time we started the project, which was December of nineteen, and which is when we contracted it. And we actually didn't start till two years later due to permitting requirements we had to do with design issues. So there was an adjustment of material prices through that time, and this amendment will reimburse the contractor for those expenses.
I had occasion.
This is on the City Marina Dock at Bella Vista Park.
I had recently visited that dock, so I, I'm aware, you know, that's, that's just the repair to the dock area, correct? And that was damaged through, for, that was through Irma, Hurricane Irma?
Yeah, it's through Irma, and this is part of, we're getting reimbursed from FEMA for the work.
Mm-hmm.
As part of that.
What, what, what kind of a timeline are we looking at for the full repair of those, for those docks? It's, they've been out of commission for a while.
It's, it's looking pretty close. The holdup we're having is we can't get electrical panel boxes, which has been a disaster for us. But the, right now, the contractor is wrapping up all the dock work itself. He's running the wires out to the panel area and setting all that up. We have some coordination to do with the Shabat to get the water meter turned back over to the city so we could hook the water up, and also get an electrical feed from a panel that was installed under the bridge there.
But there's still staging, right, to the, to the, to the west, right?
Yes.
That's going on for the, the JCC area.
Right. The Shabat still is using the property for a lot of construction staging.
So those docks won't be operational for, for a while.
Correct.
Okay.
And we'll probably go, you know, as through, as part of the park's master planning, we'll probably look at what we're gonna do down there.
Okay.
So this, this amendment is to basically get the contractor up to speed.
It's just a change order, right?
Yeah, basically a change order. They're coming through as amendments now, so it's a little different.
Okay.
But not a consent item, agenda.
How many docks?
Six.
Six docks, okay. What about the water taxi? No comment on that, huh? No water taxi anytime soon, right? Okay. Okay. All right. Any, any other comments from the commission, or?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, item ten G.
Ten G is a resolution approving an increase in the expenditure of budgeted funds with ROLL Network Salping.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Commissioner. On behalf of Paul Abbott, who had to leave, the intersection at North Bay Road and 174th Street is not lit enough for the pedestrian traffic that we have going there. ROLL is in the city doing lighting work and has the expertise and the personnel here to do that, so we are using them to install four lights, one on each corner of 174th and North Bay Road, at the amount of forty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars.
Fantastic. That is wonderful news, and because that area is definitely, I've received inquiries, I'm sure others have.
Many inquiries, yeah.
The pedestal, everything's already installed, correct?
The bases are in.
The bases.
The light poles will be, the light poles will be going in. The luminaires are still on back order, so as soon as those go in. So you'll see poles there without actual lights on them for, March eighth is the latest, is the most recent date they gave us for delivery. It was supposed to be March twenty-eighth. It's now backed up to March eighth.
So we're gonna see some-
February twenty-eighth, March eighth?
It was February twenty-eighth. They just backed it up to March eighth. But the light poles will be in.
And when would the lights go on? March eighth, or after March eighth?
After March eighth, assuming that they actually get here on March eighth, and we don't get another delay.
No, that's great, thank you very much.
That's a high-traffic area, so it's a good improvement. It's a good improvement.
And then we gotta work on North Bay Road, towards, going towards the church and all that, that start too.
Rick actually got a proposal for a lighting study. And that is already in the works. That was not of the amount that had to come before you for-
I know from my campaign.
Yeah, but, I mean, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, ten H we've done?
Yes.
So we are on ten.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution approving an agreement with Architects Design Group to conduct a space needs assessment and site feasibility study.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, this item's being brought back to you based on your direction to contract with a company to do a feasibility study. So we went through our bidding process, and we ended up with Architects Design Group. City staff and I have met with them, and they have put together a proposal. This is part of your direction to look at public and pedestrian safety initiatives. One of the things our public speaker mentioned earlier this evening was the importance of, you know, the safety of our streets and our residents. This item, and I'm gonna ask the president of the company to come up and present, but this item is totally related to the space planning, the future needs, the staffing, the analysis, an entire overview of our police department, along with future projections of population studies in terms of what our residents need now and what they're going to need. So truly, a study that's gonna bring you back options that will look at our existing space and structure, as well as the property to the north and the south, with you providing input. So with that, I would ask Ian to come up and speak.
Thank you for your patience.
That's the way these are. You guys have some busy things to think about. Good evening, I'm Ian Reeves, I'm president of ADG. Rick Mullis is one of my associate vice presidents and senior architects, so. Our firm has been doing nothing but government public safety work since nineteen seventy-one. That's all we do. So this would be in about the four-hundredth range of these feasibility studies that we've done across the country. As Stan said, this would be a comprehensive look at your current organizational structure, your staffing, the services you're providing, operational efficiencies, looking at spatial needs for the amount of space that you need to fully execute the mission that the police department is doing on a day-to-day basis. And it would only not just look at current need, but utilize those, University of Florida sends us, multiple projections for population. And with population density comes service calls. So that affects their day-to-day operational needs. And so the spatial needs assessment will be a room-by-room documentation of every space. We believe, based on our very large database, what your new facility, if you were to plan a new facility, would be required to house within it. Likewise, we would look at multiple development site considerations. Whether it's a leased space, whether it's an adaptive reuse of an existing, whether it's new construction, whether it's a renovation expansion, we'll assess that based on the direction given by management after he receives direction from the mayor and council. And we will work through this process in two to three months. And during that process, we would probably anticipate there would be some workshops, so community engagement would be part of that process. We have found that to be absolutely instrumental in the success of planning government facilities like this. And we're very good at assisting with that. So we've submitted the proposal. Stan negotiated with us very well. We've brought the fee down a little bit, so we're ready to go, if you all are.
Ian, for clarification, you will first look at their current space, correct?
Yes, yeah, we'll do an exhaustive walkthrough documentation. I'm sure it's probably not something you wanna emulate, because if it was right, we wouldn't be here. But there are always things that we can take. We start our programming study interviews with staff by saying two things that I think are very important. We don't want you to think about the way you operate today, because if it was right, we wouldn't be here. But we also want you to be very cognizant of every square footage allocation has a dollar sign attached to it. So these programming studies start with once, and through attrition discussions, we hone them down to needs. And we search every opportunity for shared space and multitasking. And we want open space that's flexible for future evolution of use. And that way, we don't have expensive rooms sitting empty. And we've got a saying up in our studio that says, because a hundred percent of our work is government and paid for by taxpayers, so we have a sign up in our studio that literally says, "We must be the guardians of the taxpayers' dollars." So we understand the premise.
I only have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
There is a timeframe from when you're gonna be giving us some preliminary information, or?
Yeah, within, we need to work very hand-in-hand with staff. We don't wanna just talk to the chief, the command staff. We wanna talk to everybody, even to administrative assistant level. With all due respect to what we do and know, nobody knows what they need better than they do for a day-to-day operational basis. We are here as a planning and design consultant to give them the most efficient working environment possible. So, two to three months to get to a draft that would then afford you all enough information to decide which development consideration, location perhaps, how big. And then from that, we would be, with direction from council and mayor and the management office, we would be moving towards a conceptual design package that would include appearance, it would include basic layouts within a building, it would include descriptive narratives from our engineers, and we use all that to send to our cost estimators. So we can give you all what we believe to be relatively turnkey development costs, so there's no, we forgot about the cell telephones, or we forgot about the furniture, all the FFNE, the furnishings, fixtures and equipment. So it'll be a very descriptive, very thoughtful cost estimate, so you all can make an informed decision on the right approach to proceed with.
Is it, we end up with one recommendation, or we give different scenarios? Because I know there's-
We have a minimum of three development options based on the direction of the design approach that the city wants us to proceed with. And they basically are, how far out can we afford to build today? So we like to make sure we're not building for just what we know we need. That's short-sighted, and we wouldn't recommend that, especially listening to the public and the concerns with density and growth capabilities and all the things that are gonna affect the service calls your department staff deal with every day. So we want you all to think about it with the thought process being not just what we need today, but in the future, you should never have to expand one of these projects until your original debt service has expired. So at least twenty or thirty years, that's good planning. If it doesn't work that way, that wasn't good planning, so.
I have a question. What cities have you worked with in the past or are working with right now?
Well, we're doing, oh god. Locally, let's see, Sunrise, we did there, one hundred and thirty-five thousand square foot public safety complex. We worked for Boca, we just did, Rick just did, Boynton Beach's Police and Fire. We've done Palm Bay, we've, I mean, there's probably fifty in the state of Florida. If you care to, I mean, they go, we've got work, we've worked for the City Marina.
And you have all that in your website? I'd like to see the buildings and what they look like and all that.
Please do.
Okay, all right.
From Miami to Seattle right now, so.
Okay.
This is all we do, so.
Yeah, thank you.
What I like about this is the kind of hardware-software approach. In other words, you're not just doing the bricks and mortar and the, you know, the hardcore, you know, architectural or, you know, structural features, but you're also looking at, you know, the staffing and the real, you know, kind of projecting forward. So I'm happy that this is a holistic and a comprehensive, you know, approach, rather than just saying, well, site A, site B, site C. You know, we've started, our premise was originally, and Commissioner Laba and I, you know, had that thought, you know, which was, you know, accessibility and visibility. That's really where we start, that was the starting point of this inquiry. So, you know, we're happy that it's taken on a complete life, you know, a complete new form and, you know, really looking at this in a very holistic fashion. So that's what I like about this approach and this whole proposal.
Mayor, these projects should be considered community assets. They should have community engagement venues and opportunities built into them. They should be able to host neighborhood groups. They should be able to host public meetings in them so that trust between your citizens and the staff at the PD can be enhanced.
And we're looking for that, so.
Yes.
Mayor, the only thing I would add is, I asked Mike and Audra to look into this, since our understanding this will also be paid for from forfeiture funds, so.
That's even better.
What I thought. You can't, you can hire people, but you can do stuff to-
So in other words, we could get, we could actually be reimbursed, you know, for a portion or some of that.
We think all of it.
That's amazing.
Oh my god, that would be amazing.
So then we're talking, it's two months, and we'll know, we'll have better, we'll have better tools and better analysis of what our needs are, past, present, future. So that's great. That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it was great, great proposal of services, and so I'm very pleased. And with that, I don't know if we have any public comments, but.
Motion to approve.
So move? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent. We're really excited to get the ball rolling.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
We are ready to turn G.
Okay, Mayor, we are on to-
Item.
Item ten L.
Ten.
It's part of the addendum packet.
Got it.
Ten L is a resolution expressing support for Senate Bill two sixty-eight and House Bill three ninety-five, which would proclaim November seventh of each year as Victims of Communism Day.
Okay, can I start?
Sure.
Whereas over one hundred years have passed since the Bolshevik revolutions in Russia and the formation of the first communist government under Vladimir Lenin, leading to decades of oppression and violence under communist regimes throughout the world. And whereas, based on the economic philosophies of Karl Marx, communism has proven incompatible with the ideals of liberty, prosperity, and dignity of human life, and has given rise to such infamous totalitarian dictators as Joseph Stalin, Vladimir Lenin, Mao Zedong, and others. Whereas communist regimes worldwide have killed more than one hundred million people and subjected countless others to exploitation and unspeakable atrocities, with victims representing many different ethnicities, creeds, and backgrounds. And whereas through false promises of equality and liberation, or through coercion, brutality, and fear, communist regimes have systematically robbed their own citizens of the rights of freedom of worship, freedom of speech, and freedom of association. And whereas many victims of communism were persecuted as political prisoners for speaking out against these regimes, and others were killed in genocidal state-sponsored purge. Whereas in addition to violating basic human rights, communist regimes have suppressed intellectual freedom, cultural life, and self-determination movements in more than forty nations worldwide. And whereas the city of Sunny Isles Beach affirms its stance against all communist regimes and stands in solidarity with the victims of communism, and whereas the city commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach finds that the passage of the aforementioned bills is in the best interest of the city and the world, now therefore be resolved by the city commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida as follows. The city commission hereby expresses support for Senate Bill eight, two, I'm sorry, two sixty-eight and House Bill three ninety-five, and urges the Florida legislature to adopt a governor's run desantis to support and approve the bills.
Thank you.
There's no public comments on this.
No public comments.
I know it's late, and I wanted people to speak about this, and they came, but they had to leave. Many of us, I'm a victim of communism, my family, we were forced to leave our original country. I wanted this to be more of a discussion, but sadly it came to this time, so. But it's important to send them out to Tallahassee because they are in legislation week, right? So that's why, thank you.
Well, I'll say, I looked at the bill online, and it's been treated favorably. I mean, I think it's like two or three committees that it's already survived.
Correct.
And certainly, I think for the city, we have people who have been displaced by communism, and directly myself included, you know, and probably Alex, you know, so. So, yeah.
And many of our residents, many.
Many of our residents, the Cuban community, the Russian community, absolutely.
In that regard, I would vote yes.
Thank you, Jesse.
So, okay.
Do we have a motion? So moved. Oh, Alex, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, man. I thought, yeah, I'll second.
All right, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Stetson.
Of course.
Okay. Item ten M.
Ten M is a resolution expressing support for Senate Bill two twenty-four and House Bill one oh five, which would allow local governments to regulate smoking in parks and on beaches.
Yes, that is my proposal, and I've spoken with, I called the office of Thad Altman, who is the, he's the representative in Tallahassee, as well as Joe Gruders, who is the senator, who has Senate Bill two twenty-four. Thad Altman has House Bill one oh five. They're both passing in good order. These bills are regarding smoking in, on beaches and in public, in parks. And I'm looking to extend it to restaurant, outdoor restaurants, where we have balconies that don't allow for smoke to escape readily. You have children sitting at tables at outdoor restaurants where their parents even smoke with no regard to their young lungs. It's similar to years ago when people didn't want smoking on planes, and they fought against it, and now we have no smoking on planes. So it's, and also, you take, people say, some people have said that, oh, people won't go to our restaurants, we have some restaurants that are struggling if there's no smoking allowed, but that's also not true. If you take a look at the Naventura Cheesecake Factory, they do not allow smoking under their covered awning. And you have to walk and sit away from the covering. And they haven't lost any business, they're always totally packed. So that's also another falsity. So I believe, and I would like to add, if the city attorney would allow, to also add support for no smoking at outdoor restaurants.
Is that part of the bill?
That's not part of the bill, but that's something that I would like Sunny Isles to support on its own, to propose, to have as an amendment possibly, or if the bill can, if it can be added on now, because it's still on the floor and the legislature is in session. And I was told today that if we presented it, it could be added on.
We can amend, if that's the will of the Commission. We can amend it to recommend that they consider banning it in restaurants.
Yes.
We could, well, the Clean Air Act already provides for that, right? We could, well, the Clean Air Act already provides for that, right?
It does, it does not.
For, not for, not for outside, right?
No, that's for indoor, not for outdoor.
Correct. Well, we can amend it if that's what y'all want to include it in the reso, for them to consider adding that on.
You know, I believe that there's, along the way, there was an amendment added and I don't have it in front of me, so I can't tell you.
Yeah, I haven't seen it.
But I believe there was an amendment added that was like within 25 feet or something like, oh, no, that's the first amendment. The first amendment they made was that you were allowed to do, so it, they carved out cigars and pipes.
Right, which is ridiculous.
Which, but, you know, I guess they have good lobbyists, so the, it would ban cigarettes, it would allow, it doesn't ban. It would allow the municipalities, say, let's take ourselves as an example.
Within 25 feet of an entrance, yes.
Right now, we cannot say, no smoking in Heritage Park. Right now, we cannot do that.
Correct.
This bill would give us that back.
Yes.
And we can regulate smoking, you know, that, we would have that authority. So it doesn't, this is not a ban on smoking. It's a return of authority to the municipality. But even with that, we, we wouldn't be able to stop people from smoking cigars. They carved that out.
Yeah.
And pipes. And part of it was because they were thinking about the beach smoking and the argument was, well, the cigarette butts are litter and they harm, you know, wildlife and whatever because of the filters. And they'd said, well, cigars don't have filters.
So they burn down.
So they carved it out. But it's not a ban, right? It's just a return to the authority. And I believe that there was a second amendment added, but that one I can't speak to that does address not directly what you're saying, but that it was within 25 feet of the entrance of something. And that would clearly cover all our RK restaurants.
Right.
You know, but I think, but I just can't tell you that that's already there.
Right.
But I believe that it is. And today was the last stop of, I'm sorry, I'm just doing my legislative.
No, they have.
I just made an update on you on this one. Because it was one of, it was one of my, the things. So today was the last day in committee and I saw that it passed.
Correct. Yes.
So this is the time to, to be, you know, emailing senators and supporting.
Correct, to really get our word out there.
Because whatever we get back is more than we have.
Yes, exactly.
Whatever we get back.
I agree.
So I'm a big fan of this and many of us are tracking this legislation. I'm a huge fan of this legislation and I believe, you know, the Florida League of Cities is following it. For me, it's not only a health issue, but it's a litter issue. And again, our beach integrity, really, if you look at what even the beach cleanup arena, Sharpova, shows what there, what exists and how difficult it is to rake the beaches with the cigarette butts.
We see today even in Florida with air conditioning, there are young kids in cars with parents smoking. It's so absurd.
So.
Especially child abuse.
So for me, it's a no-brainer about, you know, it's a home rule issue allowing the municipalities to be able to regulate this type, this action on our public, in our public beaches and parks. So for me, it's a no-brainer. I'm very much in support of this.
I think we support it because I think that this amendment, if, you know, if, because it's information I got from the Florida League of Cities, so I believe that it's, you know, but I just haven't seen it with my eyes, so I don't like to, but I think, let's just support it as is and we can take up.
Still, to clarify, I think if we could add the language that we would like to add, it would just make it even stronger.
I, okay, this is my opinion. We have this bill. I mean, right now this says, you know, we support the bill that's already, you know, up in Tallahassee. We could ask them to amend it, but then my question is, would it hamper the probability of this bill as is passing? You know, right now it's moving along, correct?
I was told today, though, that it's not too late.
It's not too late. Who told?
I spoke with Hunter Flack. He's the assistant to Joe Gruders, who is the senator.
Okay, so who's putting this? Yeah, okay.
Yes. And he said, this is the time, if we can get.
This is the time to amend.
And this was the perfect time because we had the commission meeting tonight.
Okay.
To get this to them and absolutely.
And when is it up for committee again? What's the next step right now?
I think it's finished its committee round. I think it's going to the floor.
Now it's going to the floor.
Unless you get it on the House side and on the Senate side, then there's no reconciliation, right? So you'd have to have it, that's the issue.
Yeah, I'm just running through all these questions in my.
Well, I have Thad Altman's offices calling me tomorrow.
So maybe, maybe we could ask them, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm going to be in touch with Senator.
I mean, we're still, we're still.
And Representative tomorrow.
I think the idea is we're resoundingly in support of this legislation as is.
Yeah, I'm in support of it. I just want to make sure that.
Yes. No, it is not too late.
We have this piece and then we're able to pass it, but if we start adding stuff, I don't know if it will take away from the probability.
I was told it's not too late.
Not too late?
No.
I mean, I think support is support. They don't have to take our request.
Exactly.
Right, so.
I mean, we could send them that and maybe they'll just take whatever, the first portion. Let's say they don't like the one about smoking outdoors in the restaurants.
We can have our own Sunny Isles Clean Air Act.
I mean, we could try. I mean.
We can't.
Yeah.
All right, let's, it's already 10:20.
We could try, yeah.
Hopefully we can.
Yes, motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
I take it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's move on.
10N is a resolution authorizing the payment of $12,720,931.25 to NDPRE number 14 LLC in accordance with the Land Donation and Transfer Development Rights Agreement between the city and NDPRE number 14 dated June 18, 2018.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, we've discussed this the last couple of meetings. We've had an opportunity now through finance and the manager's office to ensure that the city has sufficient funds in order to pay off the debt to what's essentially the Navarro property, as we all know. And I just wanted you all to know that by doing so, we saved the city $166,000 in documentary stamps and surtax on the deed because the original agreement had us paying for recording the deed. So 10, we have closing scheduled for the 28th of the month. We will accept title to the property and then we will start receiving the rent from Navarro CVS.
How much is the rent?
$32,000 a month, I believe.
Nice.
It's $32,000 less, a management fee of around.
$1,200.
I told Audra to be ready just in case, so she's been waiting.
The base rent is a little over $20,000. There's $3,500 and some odd dollars of CAM expenses, maintenance expenses on the property, and then there's real estate tax and property insurance and sales tax. The grand total collected is 32. However, the base rent is 20 with obviously the rest of the expenses being collected to pay expenses on the property.
And I think, I think the point is the way it was structured prior would be, they would, CVS Navarro would be collecting the rent. By us doing this, we would now start collecting the rent ourselves in addition to add negotiating the savings of the $166,000.
Can I make a motion?
Any comments? Any comments?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The energy now.
Where's that Cuban coffee now, Alex?
What about that consent agenda? We can. Consent agenda.
There's only 45 minutes to get through resolutions. 45 minutes.
All right. So are we discussing items now?
But maybe those were the controversial ones, so. Okay, if this is me, the legislative, well, I already gave the update on Jerry's item on the HB 105, so I just piggybacked on that. And then the second update I wanted to give was on the Anthony Resnick Act, which, well, Susan and I went, I want to back up, Susan and I went up to Tallahassee with the Florida League of Cities for their legislative days where they send us to advocate with other, you know, municipal colleagues for home rule issues. And so among them was the smoking in public places. There was one on tree protection, cybersecurity assistance, sovereign immunity one, and of course, our favorite, short-term rentals. So we spent the day doing that and then separately, we attended the Anthony Resnick Act hearing where we, where we saw it pass that committee. And it's still moving forward. It's expected to do well in the, in the Senate and, but it can use all the support that we can give it. So if you have five minutes tomorrow and you can send an email to the senators, to the representatives, I'm happy to help you find who that person is for you, or you just send it to the sponsors, which is Senator Pizzo and Representative Lupus. Everything helps. And along, along that path, we've made an effort to send the resolution that we passed in support of it in January and shared it with other municipalities. I don't know how many actually did it, but I've confirmed three others, so I wanted to thank them, North Miami Beach, Aventura, and Dania Beach. They all passed, we basically did their homework, you know, we sent it to them, they took it, tweaked it, and passed it in their own commission meetings. So the Anthony Resnick Act is getting that additional support. And each municipal resolution, if you think about it, it's like, for us, it would be like 23,000 emails, right? Because we represent the city, so, and the residents. So the same is true for those municipalities. But I would ask that please, the legislative session ends on March 11th. I don't know what the committee schedule is, it's not posted yet, so just send your support. If you need to know who, just reach out, we'll help you. And that's my legislative update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item.
All right. Real quick, I mean, I discussed it last time, I brought it up, so I'm interested in the formation of a senior advisory committee, okay? Because I think, obviously, we have a large population of seniors here. We just built the Gateway Center, which is the senior center in essence, and I think, you know, we should give them some sort of voice, a committee. I believe they will be very engaged and I just want you to think about it. I don't know if you have any questions, but we should move forward and look to, you know, go through the, through the process of putting a, an advisory committee for seniors together. I already know some that would jump at the opportunity, yeah, for sure.
I love that idea a lot, I've been campaigning lately, so I've been talking to a lot of our seniors and I've been going to their activities. I'm so glad that the last bingo, we have almost 50 people there, so it's been like getting traction because they didn't even know about it. So like, that committee, if you let me, I would like to co-sponsor with you.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Can we, can some of that function be done at staff level, some of the senior outreach? Or is this something that?
Susan's an expert on that, so I'm gonna ask her for the history.
And I'm gonna graciously defer to Sylvia, who's walking up right now.
I meant Sylvia, I meant Sylvia, Sylvia.
More work, more work.
So, sorry, some of the history, we do a lot of outreach, so prior to Gateway Center actually opening, excuse me, I haven't talked for a little bit. Prior to us actually opening, we had done some outreach with our seniors. Obviously, when COVID hit, a lot of things suspended. We had a whole list of people who were participating in our programs before, like Tai Chi and yoga that we were doing at Pelican prior to Gateway. We were staying in communication with them. When we opened Gateway, we stayed in communication with all of them and we actually did surveys with all of them to find out what kind of programming they wanted to see at Gateway. You know, it hasn't, it didn't start off as great and as grandiose as I had hoped, but I think that that's really primarily due to COVID. So in the fall, we implemented a bunch of new programs. We had Tai Chi, we had yoga, we had chair yoga, we had low-impact aerobics. And all of those classes, we were limiting to 15 because of COVID. We wanted to make sure that it was safe inside the facility, inside the rooms, that there wasn't too many of them on top of each other. And almost all of those classes were full. This winter, with the surge of Omicron, things, you know, plummeted a little bit and they told us, they've been in communication with us, they go to the front desk, they let us know they're concerned about coming to some of the programs. The Mount Sinai lecture died down a little bit. Social seniors canceled a bunch of their programs as well because people were not wanting to come out. But now it's picking up again. So, I mean, we've started Zumba, we've started quite a few different fitness classes. We just started a cooking class, which had 12 to 15 people in it. So, I mean, the staff does have a mailing list of all of the seniors who've participated in our program. We reach out to the residents, we stay on the phone with them. We're implementing, we're working now on training the staff to implement that senior helper, which I know is a little bit different than what you're talking about right now. But there is a lot of that interaction and engagement with them and we are constantly, so if you're there, I know you've seen Jessica and you see Diana, they're constantly going to the program and talking to the people who are attending to make sure, what, you know, did you enjoy the movie? Is this the kind of movie you want to see? Do you want to see a different movie for next month? We're constantly trying to collect that input from them to make sure that what we're putting out there is the kind of activities that they're engaged in.
Can you do a plug for Spring Fling that's coming up?
Oh, thanks.
You're welcome.
Good job. So we have, obviously with COVID, we stopped this for a while. We were doing dinner dancing events at Pelican. Now we have amazing Gateway Center to host it. So of course you put me in the spot and I think it's March 12? Yes? Yeah, Kathy. Kathy for the win. March 12th, Saturday, we have, our Spring Fling is back at Gateway Center, so it's a ticketed event. We'll have dinner catered by Olive Garden. We will have Benji Raffaelli performing for live musical entertainment. Tickets are available online or can be purchased in person, City Hall, Gateway, or Pelican Park.
No, thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate that. But, you know, the reason to form this committee also is to hear them out because it's a different demographic, right? So for instance, in talking to some of them, you know, they'll tell you, you know what? We need some benches because we like to walk the city and we need benches every so often, we need more shade. So they bring a different perspective to some of the issues that we have in this city as a whole. So, and they could obviously speak for whatever their interests are. So just wanted to put that out there so we could, you know, look at perhaps forming a committee, you know, and gauge if there's interest, if we're really going to be able to get a quorum of senior citizens that will be involved. I think so, you know, they.
I actually agree too, because like talking to them, some of the bus stops had changed and they were telling me before we used to have.
And it affects them, and you wouldn't even think about.
Like something here going from here to there. And like you said, I never used it, so I didn't know. So, or some of them, they need help with doing grocery shop, like from Publix, et cetera. So there is a bunch of different, I'm not saying that that's what we are going to be doing, no, no.
But they just bring a different.
Different perspective, what they're, their needs. And I think having them, that forum, any opportunity they have to socialize and to participate, I think they value that, so I agree with Commissioner Lama.
I just do have a question. When you say senior, what age range are you targeting specifically?
We could discuss that. I mean, it could be.
Sorry. Stan signing up.
Social security age, I don't know. What is it? You know, 65 enough, 70 enough?
Well, like the building, 55 plus, you know, like those buildings.
Hey, I'm 51, man. No, I'm 55, so.
So you want a bench by your house?
Can I just suggest that you, if you want to.
We could discuss, I mean, I'm just bringing it up so we could probably.
Yeah, I was just going to say that if you want to pursue something like that, you need to provide some clarity to them to what the goal is, right?
Yes, of course.
Because, you know, the comments that you're making are really suggestions that that committee would not necessarily be able to implement something to react to that or to create some sort of solution.
Correct.
That would be feedback that we would want and we would take and work on, you know, and I agree with you about, I'm sorry, Stan, I'm probably speaking out of turn. I agree with you about representation, but that goes across on everything, right? Like on every, any committee, you would want to include people who have certain disabilities or seniors or the very. or seniors or the various age grades, because they can provide different information on those different topics.
Correct.
That's kind of where I am. I'm not sure I'm clear as to what exactly is the mandate or the mission of, and of a senior advisory committee. I'm, I'm not sure we've, what it is we're trying to. If it's, if it's more like getting seniors together to give their input, I don't know if you need to form a committee for that, or you can.
I think a suggestion might as well.
Yeah, or it's something that, you know, I'm not sure, you know, a lot of resources are committed when you do an advisory committee. And so it takes staff, it takes, it's resources, it's time, it's, these are public meetings and there's, so I think, if we don't, I think we need a little clarity as to what exactly this committee would be doing and whether or not you need a formalized committee arrangement or there's some way to do it, you know, in a, in a less formalized fashion.
So, so what I'm thinking is, okay, what, what services can, can they utilize? And they could give us that type of feedback, you know, what type of entertainment, uh, and what they need, uh, from the city, you know, as a whole. I could, I could, you know, send out an email, I could put something together where it's a little more clarified. And then please, you know, if you have any ideas, let me know, but we could keep it to three or four, let's say, main topics that this senior advisory committee would, would kind of work on, let's say, you know, and they could give us that feedback to see how the city itself can be a little better suited for, for, for their needs. You know, and that's my idea.
Remember, they meet six times a year, they're notice.
They meet where?
Well, we have different, like the CAC met, right? And you, there's a whole process, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, okay. I thought you were saying they meet already, yeah, okay.
No, 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 but, um, you know, there's a whole kind of, you know, there's a, a format. So I think for me, I'd like a little more clarity on what, yeah.
I just wanted to bring it up and, 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 and see how we could perhaps.
I mean, if we.
Integrate them and have a committee where they could voice their.
I think, Alex, that, you know, contact, um, other municipalities that have one and see what, what, what they do.
What their framework is.
And, and, yeah, and then also, you know, we have the social seniors and, you know, I think that that might be.
That's separate.
No, I know that that's separate, but I'm saying it's a good resource, yeah.
Yeah, that's a source, yeah, it's a good resource, yeah. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay.
All right. And, uh, and then the other one, uh, is basically, listen, I, I understand that, you know, pedestrian bridges, you know, there's different opinions on pedestrian bridges and the crosswalks. And specifically, one seventy-fourth and Collins Avenue, I think that's a high-traffic pedestrian area. And we're up for our transportation master plan, so I would like for us to revisit, you know, the need for pedestrian bridges or the need to mitigate some of the issues we have around one seventy-fourth because that's the beach access. And there's so many people crossing there that we really need to look for a solution, whether it's a pedestrian bridge or whatever it is. Going back to pedestrian bridge, um, you know, I, I, I don't think we need to have a, a, a floating park, you know, the, the Hanging Gardens of Babylon there. You know, it's a lot of money, I agree, but then we could probably look at another design, you know? That's beautiful, but it's less expensive, you know? And it serves the purpose of getting, let's say, some of the families that are walking to the beach with their kids or some of the senior citizens that cannot cross that, that Collins Avenue in thirty seconds. So I'm putting that out there and, uh, you know, for consideration.
I, I agree with you.
And we should have a workshop. We should have a workshop to discuss this because last time, the workshop we had was not a workshop, really. We didn't really have time to, or the opportunity to talk about it.
I, I, I'd like to see a charrette. I'd like to see us go to the Winston Towers area. I mean, if, if anybody.
Yeah.
Benefits by that, you know, whatever, whatever we ultimately agree to implement, whether it's a, a, a Dutch scramble crosswalk or a bridge or so forth.
Whatever it is.
I think we need some input from the residents who actually live there because they're the ones that, you know.
And we should go there and see what they, because, because I get different views. I get some people saying it's a waste of money, it's a waste of money. And then some people say, I can't cross, I can't cross, you know, it's difficult, you know, it's very dangerous, so.
I think that if, if there's gonna be a pedestrian bridge, it has to be there. Like, to me, that's the most logical place to put one.
When someone presses a button to cross, is there anything that pops up from the road that we can install in the roadway? I know it's FDOT, but is there anything, anywhere that pops up to block the cars, you know, and, and then goes down?
That's gonna be.
When, you know, when the certain period of time passes? Anything like that?
I'm, I'm not familiar with it, but I'm not an expert on it. I can research and get back with you on it.
Yeah. Maybe there's something that could go in the roadway that blocks the cars, you know, at a safe distance and, and allows the pedestrians to cross and then goes down at a certain timer.
We can ask Craven Thompson, who's working on for the march. They're researching every possible.
Well, I mean, wouldn't that, I mean, I'm not an expert, that, wouldn't that be a hazard too? Distract the driver on his phone?
Distract the driver on his phone.
Yeah. Will just crash into that wall, I mean.
Well, better than crashing into a person crossing.
No, 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 I know, but no, but, but the solution, uh, yeah, I don't know. I mean, we'll have to see. I mean, what I'm thinking, either pedestrian bridge or trying to see how they could cross there, whether we increase the timer or we put, uh, whatever it is, but yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know, I'm just, yeah.
If they're gonna hit the barrier, they're gonna hit a person, right?
Um, well, I, I, I hope that, the thing is that what about if the person is crossing, jaywalking right in front of the barrier? I, I, I don't know.
Well, could we, I mean, we, um, I'm sure we want to kind of hasten, hasten the, you know, hasten the completion of this, this meeting.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So can we, can we agree to maybe a charrette or?
A charrette and a workshop and.
You know, and, you know, something where we kind of get, get the input from the residents and kind of, uh, so we can, I mean, we're, we're working on different lines, right? We're consulting engineering, um, you know.
I think this is one of the specialties, Claudia, of Coradino Group, right? So we just now approved their contract. Is this something they could do for us?
Transportation master plan, they're wanting.
I'm sorry, don't call me.
Sure, they can definitely tackle something like this. Um, also, it will be creative. Before we start it, we can have a workshop, so we will define exactly what will be the, um, the items to touch on in the charrette, uh, because we wouldn't like to go blindly to, to the community.
Yeah. What, what I'm concerned with a charrette is that, let's say, sixty percent of the people that we polled say, we don't want a bridge, and forty percent say yes. But the question is, we need to keep people safe, right? Is that the best, let's say, decision that we rely on polling?
That, that is exactly why I think we, we will need a, a, a workshop to define what are the goals that you want to, you know, out of the charrette. Uh, do you want to go to the charrette with some ideas already to the public so they can see what potentially it can look like? Or do you want to go feedback, uh, from the ground?
Alternatively, we can, you know, u- utilize the, the, you know, the pedestrian and mobility safety committee, you know, as part of that, you know, we could redirect it to the, to the map stack.
We can start engaging with them as well, definitely.
Yeah, as opposed to just saying, okay, let's farm it to Coradino. I think we need to kind of.
Definitely.
That's a, that's a core, that's a core crosswalk. You know, that's as about as core a crosswalk in the city as you can get. So, you know, maybe that can be redirected through that.
That's a great idea.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay, any, uh, current and future city properties? I, last, but definitely not least, here we go. Make it, make it snappy.
Okay, we're gonna give you, we're still working on our list, we're gonna give you, uh, we're gonna email you a list of all of the city-owned properties. In terms of this, uh, one of the things that we need to do with our, our acquisition of the Turnberry is we're gonna need to do a rezoning because currently it's zoned for townhomes and we need to rezone it to some type of community facility use and have you give us some directions on what the use of that property is. So we will bring something back to you next month regarding that.
Great. I think we all, you know, we've all individually been, um, involved in that discussion, right?
Correct.
For the most part. So we all have a certain, you have some feedback from the commission as to.
Yes, I do. And I'll bring you back, we'll bring you back something next month.
Okay, sounds good. Any other, we have, that's it? We have one, we have Citizens Forum, I think we have a speaker. The patience is a virtue.
My name is Felix Kizner. I live to fifty-one seventy-fourth Street. First of all, kudos to everyone that stayed here who doesn't get paid. And, uh, wanted to say congratulations to the new commissioners. Uh, you know, elections, Sunny Isles Beach definitely turned to a blood sport. And you survived, and it seems like the, some of the constituents loved the negativity. The more negative it got, the more they loved it, which is kind of scary. But bottom line is, uh, we have seen the limitations. I know some, and I'm not saying the president here, some promise that they're gonna open up the traffic like the Red Sea, uh, turn ocean into wine and do the, but we just saw today that really the commission is limited. You guys are limited in what you can do and the promises that are made during the campaign, like removing all the boards from all the buildings and getting the new people in, fighting corruption. It was funny to listen to. But bottom line is, um, I just wanted to say that one thing we learned from Champlain Towers.
Pervious concrete.
The what?
Pervious concrete.
Good. All right.
That was my campaign.
Well, almost, almost there. But, uh, if we learn anything from Champlain Towers, and right now there's a legislation in session, and that is that, um, whenever it comes to things like traffic safety and other things and life safety, you should use the consultants. I would feel very uncomfortable, any of you guys, unless you are specialists in that, to make decisions without the proper consultation. And that was the downfall of Champlain Towers. They didn't. The board members made the decision where they had no expertise. So if some may think it's a waste of tax dollars, I say it's not. Uh, and, uh, one of the last things is, as a lesson I've learned from myself today, in Russian we say, in Agdas Lushich Shum Mory, you have to listen to the sound of the sea, what's going on outside of City Hall. I'm glad Mayor Goldman, you do go out there and you hold these shops and workshops and you listen to what's going on out there and you're in contact with constituents all the time, but as today you saw on seven A, unless you have proper communication, not just in emails, social media, you will be faced with barrage. People are filled with misinformation and disinformation. Now misinformation's when you, uh, spread something that's not true and you don't know it's true. Disinformation's when you know it's false and you still continue to spread it. So like seven A, I mean, today it was almost like you're taking the US Constitution away with seven A. There's no transparency, you're about to destroy America. So here's the thing, uh, you know, I, I'm involved in social media a lot, and the communication has to be there on the level to stop missing disinformation when it's just being bored because you have these echo rooms. I know you can't do anything, but the more you communicate, including social media, not just the emails, the more you speak to the constituent people using social media. It's a tool. It can be used to destroy any good change that you're planning to bring to the city, or it can make something really, really constructive and good for the city. So please, use that social media a little bit more. I think Sunny Isles Beach needs to have its presence there, communication, videos, part of the videos from the meeting, get it out there so we can fight the missing disinformation that we heard today on seven A. My name is Felix and I'm done speaking. Thank you if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Felix.
Thank you, Felix.
I just want to comment, uh, on, on that social media piece. I think what a lot of residents don't understand is that because of sunshine and other issues, like, we can't respond, like, we're, or it's a bad idea for us to respond on, on social media because then we have to keep that record and we don't always control that record. Uh, and so if people want to ask questions of, of us, it, it's, you're not likely to get the answer on Facebook. That, we, you know, you have to email us, come see us, come talk to us, uh, and we are accessible. But social media is, is a good place to share information, but not for us to engage with the public.
No, I agree.
And I think a lot of people don't understand that, so.
You can't even put a like. If you put a like on a certain post, I've seen commissioners, uh, we know what happened in Hollendale Beach, one commissioner liked the like of a policeman that were like.
A lot of, there's been, there's, you know, there's been elected officials who have gotten in trouble on Facebook, and so it's smart for us not to, and I don't mean here, I mean in general, and so it's smart for us not to, uh, play ball there.
No, no.
But, but come talk to us, email us, call us, come see us.
Well, sometimes, uh, maybe other people, if you provide enough information, can be proactive for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion.
To adjourn?
Yes, to adjourn.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Who's second?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ari. What? I put a card in. You have a card?
I'm sorry.
Ten, seven.
Okay, okay.
You have a card on thirteen? Yes. Okay. Well, speak. I don't see it, but speak. I did. I wish you could.
That's okay.
I believe you are. I'm here to talk about our problem that we have in the city with the chief of police. Either you hire him or you fire him. You've got now a full commission, permanent commission, permanent city manager. What's the scoop with, with, with his life? I mean, if I would be him, I would just walk away. What's going on? Why can't he get a contract? Why can't he get a contract for a year? And if he's no good, throw him out. But don't play with his life. I mean, he's been, what, nine months now? He doesn't know where he's coming or going. I think it's about time to make a decision. I'm hoping within two months we can have some other resolution. If I would be him, I'd just walk out and leave you with all the problem that you have. I mean, so far he does his job, the, the cops love him. You play politics. Why are you playing politics with, with, with the chief? I mean, the chief should be priority for the city more than commissioners, more than, than anybody.[1736.83]